I hope I'm muted.
You are not muted, Council President. You are unmuted.
I'm trying to mute myself. It's not allowing me to do it.
Perhaps you can mute her for now.
Yeah, yeah. Can you, Mr. Collins?
Yes, ma'am, I will. If you do something or unable to unmute yourself, try star six on the phone or the little microphone. If you're using the app, if you're on a computer, try your spacebar. Okay, I'm going to mute you now, and if you can't get back, then just exit the meeting, come back in. Ladies and gentlemen, if you're not on City Council, please mute your microphones, and that will allow us to proceed without background noise. Thank you.
What's the noise?
I think, well, let's see where it's coming from. Whatever it is, stop. I think it's Mr. Michelle's air purifier. Ladies and gentlemen, if you are not on the City Council, please mute yourself so that we can eliminate background noise.
Are you ready to start, Mr. Collins?
I am ready to start as soon as I start recording, and... There we go. Recording, we are ready to proceed, ma'am.
Okay, good evening, everybody. We've called this meeting to order. Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to public logs nineteen seventy-five, chapter two thirty-one. This agenda is completely unknown, and was sent to the Trenton Times and the Trentonian newspapers, posted on the First Floor Bulletin Board in City Hall, filed in the City Clerk's office, and posted on the City of Trenton website. Former action will be taken. Roll call, Mr. Collins.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Blakely.
Present.
Ms. Caldwell-Wilson, I will call you last. Mr. Harrison. Mr. Michelle. Mr. Rodriguez. Ms. Vaughn. Council President McBride.
She's muted.
She is present, though. I do know she's here. And Council Vice President, who's sitting in, is the chair this evening.
Present.
Yes, ma'am. Now, call the directors. Mr. Cruz.
Present.
Mr. Cherry. Mr. Cherry, are you with us this evening?
Present.
Thank you. Mr. McCallie. Mr. Bridges, or someone from the Law Department, Ms. Abdorazad.
Jacqueline Abdurrazad, thank you so much.
Sally Sanjo from the Law Department as well.
Yes, ma'am. Welcome, Miss.
Thank you.
Director Coley.
Present.
Director Mazzio.
Present.
Director Delisle.
Present.
Director Lopez.
Good evening, everyone. I'm present.
Thank you, ma'am. Director Anatiere. Excuse me, if you're, I'm getting some background noise. If you went out on the council, could you please mute yourself? Thank you. Director Anatiere. Director Richardson.
Present. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, everyone.
Director Levinberg.
Present. Good evening, everybody.
And I'd like to say congratulations to Michelle, who is retired. That being said, who is filling in for the Finance Department this evening?
Mr. Clark, I believe Mary Henry, but I, I, I can't see her from, from my computer.
Yes, sir. Council Vice President, we have a quorum. The directors have been called. Would you like me to proceed?
Yes, please do.
First on the docket this evening, we will have minutes for approval. We're going to be doing the June eighteen minutes. I am striking the July second minutes. They are not finished yet. They'll have the June eighteen minutes tomorrow morning. There will be twenty-five communications and petitions listed on the docket, and there will be no reports. The reports for the clerk's office will be done at the end of the month. Madam Vice Chair, we will have two ordinances for public hearing and reading.
I have a question. President Caldwell-Wilson, I have a question.
Yes, yes, Councilman.
I have a question about the tardiness of the minutes. Generally, you know, I would think that we would want to have the minutes sooner than we're getting them. Is there any particular reason why we're getting them so late?
Yeah, um, we had, we are having an issue with the way the minutes are done. Apparently, the minutes stopped being done somewhere around May before I arrived. Um, we've had several conversations and several training moments with regard to the drafts coming out of the minutes. The drafts that were coming out are not satisfactory. They had to be entirely reworked, and that is, and that's a staff issue that's being worked on presently.
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate the importance of making sure that all of the votes are documented correctly. I went back to verify a vote a few weeks ago and noticed that it was not correct, and, you know, it's very important that the record reflects everything that happens in a meeting correctly and accurately, and so I just wanted to be certain that, you know, we are doing everything that we can to make sure that they're produced timely as well as accurately, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
One of the other problems is some of the meetings over the summer, only segments of them were, only segments of them were recorded. So the entire full meetings weren't recorded. In one case, only four minutes of the meeting was recorded, and those are incredibly, you know, it's rebuilding a record on what you, people actually voted on, so that it is an accurate record, and I did note, and unfortunately, one, two, two of the sets of minutes that came to me, every vote in those minutes were incorrect, and I had, I've been correcting them as I go along. So I've been watching the tapes. The minutes that I'm working on now, it's, it's seven or eight hours in that I'm, that I'm recreating the process. So you will have those tomorrow morning. I did finish that. I want to do some review to make sure that actually one of the votes that I don't have online, that I have in the office, is correct, and then you'll have those tomorrow morning. So I agree with you. They need to be absolutely spot-on correct. I absolutely agree with you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Council Vice President.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison, I was able to finally, yeah, I was finally able to get on. Thank you.
Yes, sir. I'm, I'll know you as president.
Mr. Clark, I'm here to, West Bridges.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
You may continue, Mr. Collins.
I just wanted to call for Ms. Vaughn. Ms. Vaughn, have you arrived yet?
Yes, I have.
Thank you, ma'am.
Live, in living color.
Evening, ma'am. There will be two, excuse me, there'll be two ordinances on the docket for public hearing. The first is twenty-one dash two, a bond ordinance providing for improvements to various school buildings and grounds in the city of Trenton and the county of Mercer, New Jersey, appropriating the aggregate amount of three million, six hundred and fifteen thousand, and actually, that is incorrect. There was a, a new number that was sent out earlier this afternoon. The number on the docket is incorrect. I sent out a, an update to council this afternoon that I received from the CFO, CFO's office, and Mr. Cruz, do you have, do you happen to have that number? Because I have multiple, multiple items open. If you could provide that number real quick, I'd appreciate it.
Uh, yes, the, the new number for the one ordinance is three million, two hundred and fifty-three thousand, two hundred and twenty-five, and that is a reduction of three hundred thousand and change.
Thank you, sir. So that, start over. Bond ordinance providing for improvements to various school buildings and grounds in the city of Trenton and the county of Mercer, New Jersey, appropriating the aggregate amount of three million, two hundred and fifty-three thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars therefore, and authorizing the issuance of three million, two hundred and fifty-three thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars in bonds or notes of the city to finance the costs thereof. I also had a request from a councilperson to, for information for the council to hear from Mr. Vincent. Council Vice Chair, did you want to entertain Mr. Vincent?
Is he going to speak? He's going to speak on the bond ordinance?
Yes, ma'am. He's going to speak on the bond for information for council. Mr. Vincent.
Will we all speak up for public hearing?
Uh, the public hearing will actually be on Tuesday. This is for an information purpose for council rather than a public comment.
Okay.
Uh, did you want to entertain that, ma'am?
Absolutely.
Mr. Vincent, could you please state your name for the record, and please proceed? Mr. Vincent is here. I know he's here because he was here earlier. He may be having a problem. Mr. Vincent, if you are on a telephone, you can hit star six. If you're on an app, you can hit the little microphone, and if you're on a computer, you can hit the spacebar if you are unable to mute yourself. There you go. Sorry, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Council. Yes, Troy D. Vincent, senior. Thank you, Council. I just wanted to share just a few thoughts around the bond orders and the consideration as you think about synthetic turf fields, in particular at Trenton Central High School. Synthetic, synthetic turf field, it's a smart solution for overused fields, for unsafe fields, and Trenton Central High School is one of many fields in the city of Trenton that is an unsafe field. Grass fields simply cannot remain resilient. It's overused. We've seen that for decades. It's, otherwise, the surface will just become, as we've seen for decades, myself as a child, it's unsafe, it's rock hard, and it's dirt field. We've seen studies have showed cities, parks and rec organizations that have communities, that have synthetic turf fields, provide youth and people of all ages year-round activities on a safe and resilient surface. And then the last point I would ask that the council consider as they think through the ordinance is that synthetic turf fields eliminates potentially, which we've seen, we've studied, harmful pesticides and fertilizers, and also it reduces significantly inducents, reduces maintenance costs from the city. Uh, that's all I, I had to share, Council.
Thank you, Mr. Vincent.
Thank you. Did any of the council members have any questions regarding the bond ordinance?
Yeah, I have a question for Mr. Vincent.
Um, no, this is not, no.
Why not, Council Vice President?
This is not a question.
I can't even hear you, I can't even hear you, Marge.
Okay.
So there's no, so there's no questions for the guests?
Excuse me, could you please let me finish? Mr. Condon, would you clarify the process for, for, for these bond ordinances and the question-answer periods?
Uh, this is, this is a question-answer period. If you'd ask questions about the value of the ordinances or any information that you really want from any of the professionals in the Finance Department who put them forward, including Mr. Cruz, any member of the school board who were present, and you can entertain any questions from any of the council members, ma'am, that you wished it.
And the public?
Uh, the public, you know, i, i, the public shouldn't really, the public will have an opportunity to speak on new items later on during the meeting. I was asked to allow Mr. Vincent to speak specifically at the time of the bond ordinance, just because, uh, it was a request made, made to me. I wasn't exactly sure what Mr. Vincent's topic was, but the public will.
Isn't, isn't this a public hearing?
Go ahead and ask your question.
This is not the public hearing. This is an information conference session, a workshop. You need to get the information that you need to vote on, on Thursday, and on Thursday, there will be a public hearing that will be open to all of the public. That's actually the process. So tonight is your informational session. The public will have a chance to speak on new docket items later on during the meeting, but for right now, this is, this is actually your question-and-answer session for the professionals.
Yeah, so I can, okay, I would like, thank you, Council Vice President. I would like to ask Mr. Vincent a question. I have heard regarding turf fields or synthetic fields, I have heard that they have become obsolete, and they're not green compliant. So having said that, most professional sports, meaning the NFL, are no longer support or will be using synthetic turf. Is that not the case?
No, that is not accurate at all. We're actually looking at new fabrics and new applications of synthetic turf, where there's a blend between turf and grass with the sand, with the sand base. So that is absolutely not accurate.
Okay, so I'm glad you said that. So I, it would be interesting to know or to confirm what type of materials is the school, will the school board purchase? Would it be the new blend that you're speaking of that will be green and environmentally compliant with EPA standards, right? I believe there is an EPA standard around these fields for schools and for children, and I'm sure it's professional and professional sports organization are, are going to comply with the EPA standards as well. So are you aware which composite the school district is, is considering versus the composite that you just described?
No, ma'am. Today, I'm not, I'm not familiar with which product they're actually considering, but I'm sure they'll, they'll, they'll do the right due diligence.
Okay, very good, and I just hope that the school board is listening and members of it who are advocating for the, the, the best standards that are out there today, so if we're going with the synthetic field, we should ensure that it is EPA compliant and that it meets the environmental standards today, and, and, and it's a healthy material. Thank you, Council Vice President.
Continue, Mr. Condon. Any more questions? Mr. Condon, you're muted.
Thank you, ma'am. Would you like me to proceed?
Yes, please.
Uh, next we'll have ordinance twenty-one dash three, an ordinance authorizing the execution of a lease agreement by and between the city of Trenton, state of New Jersey, and Community Loan Fund of New Jersey, Inc., doing business as New Jersey Community Capital with respect to the East Trenton Library Community Center project. Any members of council have any questions? Ma'am, would you like me to proceed?
You can proceed, Mr. Collins.
And just for the record, those both, because their ordinance will be roll called. Next, we have resolutions. First on the docket, we have resolution twenty-one dash oh one eight, a resolution appointing Councilman Joseph Harrison as a class-three member of the planning board. Any questions? Ma'am, would you like this on the consent agenda or?
Yeah, consent.
Next, ma'am, we have resolution twenty-one dash oh one nine, a resolution declaring that the second Monday in October shall be known as Indigenous Peoples' Day in the city of Trenton.
Is that a resolution or ordinance? Uh, Council, Council Vice President, may I speak?
Go ahead, go ahead, Councilwoman.
Thank you. Um, regarding this, making this a holiday, an official holiday in the city of Trenton, um, is there, is there, uh, why isn't this an ordinance? Can the Law Department opine on this, please, if, if they're on the line? Because I would think if we're going to do a, a, a holiday, and I know there are other municipalities and, and states across our country that are embarking on the same effort, is this, should this not be a law instead of a resolution?
Mr. Bridges?
Uh, as was presented to me, we were changing an existing holiday that was on the books to reflect the title as presented by Mr. Rodriguez. So I, as I understood it, we were not creating a separate individual holiday, more so we were reclassifying one as, based on the request for legal advice that was sent up to me. If that not be the case, I'm happy to relook at that and, and give you a decision on that within the next couple of days.
I do believe it's replacing Columbus Day.
That's correct. So we're not necessarily, I'm sorry, Ms. Vaughn, we're not necessarily creating.
But nonetheless, although it's replacing it, it is a new holiday, and we're removing a holiday. In some instances, it's not, it is, I don't, Columbus Day is still recognized in some, uh, spaces in our, in our country, and, and Indigenous, Indigenous Peoples' Day as well. So again, should we, every, I mean, I'm thinking about when the country adopted Martin Luther King holiday as a birthday, I mean, a birthday as a holiday. That, that was, uh, done by statute and by law. So I, I'm just asking, you know, I am, you know, I'm asking the Law Department, when you, when we're recognizing any holiday and changing a holiday, whether it's on the municipal level, state level, county level, national level, should it not be a law?
Uh, I, I think the distinction there, and I'm happy to look further into that, Councilwoman Vaughn, I think the distinction is with Martin Luther King Day, it was not an existing holiday in several states, so they created that holiday. In this instance, we're really renaming an existing one, but I do understand the distinction you're making, and if it pleases the council, I'd be happy to quickly research that and look into that and get back to you in a couple of days with that. But again, my understanding at the time is that we were not creating an additional day off. We were simply recapitulating what it is currently listed as on the books.
And it's not, off on the, on the record, that day was reapportioned to Juneteenth in June. Uh, so this is actually not a holiday as far as working. It's just recognizing that day as Indigenous Peoples' Day, and Mr. Rodriguez has requested that it be an ordinance. Mr. Rodriguez, I'm sorry, I, I think I cut you off for what you wanted to say.
Well, yes, because by executive order of the mayor.
Whenever you speak, you have to go to the chair.
I asked you permission already.
I didn't hear you.
Yeah, we are, because.
Mr. Rodriguez.
The, the thing is that the, the holiday itself, the pay holiday, was switched to, to June, June tenth, and that was by executive order. So if we were going to change that holiday completely, then we needed an ordinance because we had, we were going to change the, what we are not going to change, what we're going to change is the name of that day that is celebrated in Trenton. That's all.
So, um, Council Vice President Caldwell-Wilson?
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
So with the change, there is an elimination, right? So we're eliminating, uh, uh, Columbus Day to be no longer a holiday and celebrate a holiday in, in the city of Trenton. Is not, is that not supposed to be an ordinance? We can just eliminate holidays, national holidays, and that was a day off, right? Schools were closed, correct? I don't know, I mean, again, I'm asking the Law Department, is, is this issue twofold? Eliminating a holiday that is an official national holiday that had been recognized and, and, and federal government buildings and entities were closed as a, can we eliminate that and just say, oh, city of Trenton, we're not recognizing anymore, and therefore, we're not aligning with the federal government, state government, and et cetera. So maybe we need two, an ordinance and a resolution. I don't know. I'm leaving, if, if, if the Law Department can get back to us, Council Vice President Caldwell-Wilson, on this.
Mr. Bridges, can you get back to us? Can you get back to us before Thursday on this?
I'd be happy to. That's not a problem.
Thank you.
President Caldwell-Wilson?
Yes, go ahead, Council.
It, it's been brought to my attention that there are a few folks, particularly a student, Jair Brown, who's a graduate of Trent High and a senior at Penn State University, who plays football there. Apparently, they are on the line as well to say a few things about the turf issue. I know that Mr. Vincent was provided an opportunity to speak regarding the turf issue, but I would like to see if we could provide an opportunity for several folks who have been assembled, who have been alerted that this was an opportunity to say a few words presently, and I wanted to see if you would give them, you know, that opportunity, particularly the young man who.
Uh, yeah, we would like to give him the opportunity. Once we get through this docket, Mr. Vincent has specifically asked if he could speak, because for some unknown reason, he had to speak early and leave. So we did, we did a favor for him. We normally don't have the, the, Mr. Condon, clarify it for me, because I'm wrong. When we're doing our docket review, do we have a public comment on, on the, on the docket?
Well, I mean, we would be taking things out of order. You can suspend the rule at your, you know, at, at your, at your request. If Mr. Blakely, if it would satisfy Mr. Blakely, we can go to them first during public portion, or, madam, it's at your prerogative if you wanted to suspend the rule and go back into the docket where we were and, and let them speak. That's, that's entirely.
First of all, I want to find out if Ms. Vaughn has finished with her.
Yeah, yeah, um, yeah, the Law Department did, did state they're going to get back to us with an opinion on the holiday change.
Okay.
And did you want to finish up twenty-one oh nineteen?
Um, yeah, I would like to hear the students speak as long as it's not going to be very lengthy.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, now, I have a question. Do you want to do the whole public portion on the docket now, or do you want to just do this portion?
Um, you know, if, if we, Mr. Blakely, if we allow the students to speak, we're going to have to allow all of the public to speak on both ordinances.
Yeah.
And that's changing the rules. That's why I would prefer that they wait till, you know, we get to the public comment section.
We can do public.
Otherwise, we're going to have to put the public comment section first before we even do our docket review.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. I mean, I think generally it's good for us to hear, um, from our constituents first, but I know that this is a little unorthodox because, you know, folks were, we generally don't do things this way, but if we could just have the students who are here give them the freedom to say a few words about this particular issue, and this, then move on and continue with the meeting and have it traditionally.
But the, the problem is if there are other people in the public want to speak on the docket, I would have to allow them to speak on the docket too. And I would prefer that they wait till the public portion to do that. I would, I would prefer that.
Well, I would just say, I know these meetings could run a little late, and I know folks, you know, this meeting.
I would suggest to our council people not take up a lot of time on, on this docket, and so that we can move it forward and show some respect for the public.
Well, well, I think that we don't want to not ask questions and, you know, do our due diligence as a council. That's why it would just be prudent to allow the few students who are speaking to talk about this issue briefly, and then we can go right back. The only reason I'm asking about allowing them to speak is because Mr. Vincent was allowed to speak, and I just want to give the students who are here an opportunity to say a few words. I, I'm not sure how many, but I know Jair is here now. He has his hand up, and I just want to give them an opportunity to say a few words.
One speak for all of them?
I guess.
Or you want to wait till the public portion, they can all speak?
Well, I tell you what, let Jair speak, and then we can allow folks to speak. I know the young man is a college student. I don't know if he has homework tonight, so I, I would like to have Mr. So I, I would like to have Mr. Brown say a few words before we move on. And then we can continue and just reserve the balance of the comments to the end of the meeting.
Public session, okay. All right.
Jair Brown, you've been recognized by the Council Vice Chair to speak on ordinance 21-2. Please state your name for the record and please speak.
Hey, I'm Jair Brown, former student at Trent Central High School, current student at Penn State University. Yes, I believe that the turf field for Penn, for Trent High will be great for the students, you know? I believe that every school around us, almost every school besides Hamas High West, has turf, and they have the ability to practice all year round and master their craft and just become better athletes, better students. And it gives a great setting, you know? It gives kids hope and belief that they can do something, that the field is nice, the community is, is nice. You don't have to practice on a grass field that wears out after one or two games and it becomes a dust bowl. More kids are coming out to play football, and more kids are leaving our school because the way our facility looks. I'm pretty sure everybody has been there. It's a grass field that has grass on one end and dirt on the other end. We don't get to practice on it throughout the week. We don't get to master our craft and get better each game because we don't want to wear the field out early before the game. So we have to practice behind the bleachers, which is not a field at all. It's just a piece of grass over there where we try to become better football players and better athletes, where it is almost impossible to mimic the same feeling of a game on the original field. So that, that's about it, that's all I have. I do not want to be lengthy or anything, but I would like for everybody to consider the students in this, you know? Making their dreams come true, making them feel like they're important. And I believe the council will do that.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Brown. Thank you so much, and I just want my colleagues to know that I don't like to break protocol and, and, and doing that. So please not, please don't do this in future meetings. I would appreciate that. You may continue, Mr. Colin.
We are back on Resolution 21-019, which is the resolution they are clearing. The second Monday in October shall be known as Indigenous People's Day in the city of Trenton.
Yeah, I think nobody discussed that.
Yeah, I didn't, we, we didn't determine if it was going to be roll called or consent agenda.
Well, if we get it-
May, may I provide some information that was just forwarded to me in this regard? Council Vice President? I just received an email that, with an attachment, bear with me while I open it. This is a resolution dated November 12, 2020, and it was when council voted unanimously on Resolution 20-668 on the holiday schedule, including moving the city holiday from October to June in recognition of Juneteenth Independence Day. The vote was unanimous. So looking at this, and I'll forward this to the, to the body, it looks as though this exact thing was done by the council unanimously with respect to the renaming of the Juneteenth holiday.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Vaughn, did you want that roll called?
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, yeah, pending what Mr. Bridges will come back with on Thursday, yes.
Okay, you may continue, Mr. Colin.
Yes, ma'am. Next, we have Resolution 21-020, a resolution of the Trenton City Council.
President, President, President Caldwell Wilson?
Yes, Mr. Blakely.
So I am 100%. I want to talk about the renaming of Indigenous People's Day. I definitely agree with that. I'm going to be voting for that resolution to change the name because I think that would be a, a very important decision to do. However, I would like us to consider a possible way for us to honor the Italian heritage of the city of Trenton and the contributions of the Italian-American community to the people, to the community of Trenton. I, I know that Columbus Day has generally been a proxy for Italian-American heritage in many Italian-Americans' perspectives. And so I definitely want to make sure that, you know, we are doing something to honor a very important historical community in our city and one that has made, you know, rich contributions to this community. And so I hope that we can discuss a way for this city to honor our Italian-American community other than, you know, naming something after Columbus. And so I just wanted to bring that up. I want the Italian-American community to know that this is not something that we're doing as a slight. We would love to honor your community in another way. And I would be open to hearing what you would think best would be when we change the name of, of Columbus Day. And that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Colin?
Yes, ma'am. We still have 21-020, a resolution of the Trenton City Council, certifying compliance with the United States Equal Opportunity Employment Commission's enforcement guidance on consideration of arresting conviction records in employment decisions under Title VII of the Civil Rights Act of 1964.
Yes, I do have a question on that.
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
President Caldwell Wilson? We passed an ordinance on this very issue. So what would be the difference between, we passed it last year, I believe. I sent that over to you, Mr. Colin. So is Mr. Bridges on the line?
Yes.
Yes. So, Mr. Bridges, are you familiar with this law?
Extremely.
Okay, can you, because I'm not extremely abreast on it. So, um, so we adopted this last year on the council at the recommendation of the DCA because, you know, all municipalities across New Jersey has adopted this particular ordinance. I, I'm just trying to understand, why would it be necessary for the council, our municipality, to, by resolution on an annual basis, as we approach, before we sign off on the budget, that we are in compliance with the law? Is it necessary to do the resolution? Or now that we've adopted it into law, should we just be following the law?
You should be following the law. I, I, I think this is an, an additional factor and an additional confirmation of the city's compliance with that. But this is, this is a floor that has already been established by law. So that, that is embedded in, in, in the city's business and the city's contracts. But again, similar to an affirmative action plan, if you were to say so, or set aside program, it would simply belt and suspender what there's already an obligation to do under both federal and state law. And to the extent that the city wants to go above and beyond that, they have the right to go above that. But that is really the floor.
Thank you. Thank you, Council Caldwell Wilson.
Any more questions? I would give that consent.
Yes, ma'am. Next, we have Resolution 21-021, a resolution authorizing the temporary current fund budget appropriation prior to the final adoption of the fiscal year 2021 municipal budget of the city of Trenton.
Oh, 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 one second, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I wanted that one to be roll called, Council President, Vice President Caldwell Wilson.
Okay.
Because the reason why I wanted to be roll called very quickly because the, the law speaks to that every director in the city of Trenton that has a budget under their jurisdiction should be aware that when they're hiring in their, in their respective departments, they should be hiring these individuals who have had a past experience with incarceration. So I don't know, I would like to hear from each department head that they understand that law and they are-
Councilwoman Vaughn, are you talking about 222 or 220? What, what one are you talking about?
The resolution. Yes, is it 220, Mr. Colin?
Yeah, we were on 221.
No, no, I, but I asked you to go back. That's what I was, that's what I asked. I did say that, I don't know if you heard me. I wanted that to be roll called. I wanted that-
I did, ma'am, I, I put it down as roll call.
Initially, Council Vice President, you said, put it in as a consent agenda. And I said, I would like to see that roll called.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Mr. Colin.
Yes, ma'am. Next, we have Resolution 21-021, a resolution authorizing the temporary current fund budget appropriation prior to the final adoption of the fiscal year 2021 municipal budget of the city of Trenton, New Jersey.
Any questions?
Yes, I do. Council Vice President Caldwell Wilson?
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
I read through this, 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 this resolution, and I have some concerns at some of the costs there or the expenses there, particularly the operating expenses on the line items, operating expenses and salary or wages for each respective department. So, and I would like to hear from those, those specific department heads as to why their salary and wages lines are so high. So can we roll call that? That's roll called anyway, correct?
Okay, yeah, the, no, that, no, we have to, you have to state roll call, that's not automatic roll call.
Okay. Yeah, the salary and wage line for some of the department heads and some of our departments operating at those levels is just, I mean, considering we are a fiscally distressed city, it doesn't seem like the mayor, Reed, is really, uh, 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 really, uh, Mayor Reed, Gus Yore, is really putting a, a stringent process around spending and a, a, any process around overtime and, and salaries. And I just want to understand what the overtime levels, is those numbers mixed in to those numbers? Because some of them seem to be astronomical, in my opinion. So I want to hear, I'm going to highlight some of them. And on Thursday, I would like the business administrator and some of those department heads to look at those line items and come to the council and tell us what, why their, why their overtime hours and/or salary and wages has increased so much.
So, Councilwoman, can I ask a question? Can you send an email, can you send an email to Mr. Cruz with your highlighted items so he's prepared with the answers on Thursday?
Oh, yeah, no problem. Thank you, Council Vice President, it's a great idea, and I will do.
Thank you. So I'm, does anyone want to roll call this one?
Oh, yes, roll call, me.
Ma'am, she, she's already called for a roll call. We're on, if you'd like me to proceed.
All right, proceed.
Yes, ma'am. Resolution 21-022, a resolution condemning hate and extremism.
Yes, I have a question on that one. Council Vice President Caldwell Wilson, may I speak?
Go ahead.
Yeah, so can I ask who introduced this one? It's under administration, correct?
Yes, ma'am. I'm not sure, I believe it came from the administration. I'm not exactly sure who it came down from.
Okay, can, can someone speak on this? What this is in reference to and what is it trying to achieve and recognize?
There, there's a memo, Council, Council Vice President, there is a memo attached to the resolutions as well as many points that are made by the resolution. If you would like for me or perhaps for the clerk to read it so that the public as well as council members get perhaps like a full feel of what the resolution is, is intent is, if, if you're okay with that, I can read it.
Oh, no, that's, that's fantastic.
Go ahead, Mr. Colin, you can read it. You have the memo?
Yes, ma'am. A resolution condemning hate and extremism. Whereas the city of Trenton is committed to defending democratic institutions, the integrity of our elections and the security of people and facilities that carry out the democratic process. And whereas the city of Trenton is committed to ending the spread of hate, bigotry, and harassment based on race, color, religion, national origin, ethnicity, sex, gender, gender identity and expression, sexual orientation, disability, and any other protective characteristic as defined by law.
Someone's speaking.
Marge, it's you, Marge, you should mute.
No. Whereas, I have it, I took care of it, ma'am. Whereas the city of Trenton wishes to affirm its commitment to the well-being and safety of, of all of its community members and to ensure that they will be protected and have their rights respected. And whereas the city of Trenton wishes to affirm its commitment to cultivating an inclusive community, including within municipal operations and institutions. And whereas the Trenton Free, the Trenton Free Public Library is committed to providing educational events and resources to the residents of Trenton and to creating an atmosphere of acceptance, inclusivity, and intellectual honesty. And whereas the diversity of our community should be celebrated and is beneficial to all within it, making us stronger and more resilient. And whereas each of our elected leaders has the ability and obligation to promote inclusiveness, celebrate diversity, work to ensure equitable opportunities in all major facets of society, prevent the spread of misinformation and disinformation, and reject hate and bias in all forms and set a positive example for their constituents in this regard. And whereas the January 6, 2021 domestic terrorism incident at our nation's capital does not reflect the values of the city of Trenton. And whereas ADL's report on murder and extremism in the United States published in 2019 found that domestic extremists killed at least 42 people in the United States in 17 separate incidents in 2019, making 2019 the sixth deadliest year on record for domestic extremist-related killings since 1970. And whereas the ADL report found that the extremist-related murders of 2019 were overwhelmingly 90% linked to right-wing extremists, with all but one of the incidents tied to right-wing extremism, and 81% of extremist-related murders in 2019 committed by white supremacists specifically. And whereas disinformation, misinformation, and online conspiracy theories such as QAnon are spreading and inspiring real world violence. And whereas additional threats have been made against institutions in the 50 capital cities, including the Capitol Building in Trenton. And whereas the city of Trenton supports the peaceful exercise of free speech, free assembly, and freedom to worship safely for all peoples. And now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Trenton, New Jersey, that, one, the city of Trenton affirms its ongoing commitment to cultivating an inclusive, safe, and just society and culture, including within municipal operations and institutions, that values the diversity of our community, works to ensure equitable opportunities in all major facets of society, and celebrates both our individuality and commonality. Two, the city of Trenton denounces the January 6, 2021 domestic terrorism incident at our nation's capital. Three, the city of Trenton denounces anti-government extremism, white supremacy, racism, antisemitism, misogyny, Islamophobia, anti-LGBTQ plus hate, albeism, and all, and other, abliism, and other forms of discrimination, including all hateful speech and bias-motivated violent actions in our community. Four, the city of Trenton denounces extremism, extremist conspiracies, theories, misinformation, and disinformation that cultivate an alienated and mistrustful electorate, undermine democratic institutions and processes, and increase the likelihood of violence. Five, the city of Trenton denounces attempts to exploit governmental procedures and basic governmental functions for personal political gain. Six, the city of Trenton commits to fostering an environment within municipal operations and institutions that does not tolerate anti-government extremists, white supremacists, racists, antisemitic misogynists, Islamophobic, anti-LGBTQ plus, abliists, and other hateful speech and actions. Seven, the city of Trenton commits to countering hate and extremism by offering in partnership with the Trenton Free Public Library an ongoing public lecture series on anti-bias and anti-racist strategies. Eight, the city of Trenton commits to countering hate and extremism through engagement with community leaders, government transparency, and public information sharing regarding efforts to fight extremism as well as the investigation and prosecution of those who commit criminal acts consistent with civil liberties protections. And nine, the city of Trenton urges residents to join us by adopting these values in their own lives, calling attention to these harms, and denouncing hate and extremism to help us keep us all safe.
Uh, Council Vice President Caldwell Wilson? May I speak?
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
I would like that resolution roll called. And I hope that a lot of my- And I hope that a lot of my constituents and residents of the city speak to that and add comments to it and edit it. Because I don't think it goes far enough. We are a diverse city, but largely the fact is we are a city of color. And I am, as a black woman of African descent, a daughter of slaves, I'm ADAS, I'm an African-American descendant of slaves, that there's no mention of Black Lives Matter. There's no mention of equal opportunity in employment and education for black and brown people of the protected class that I belong in and the majority of the citizens of this city who are black and brown. Now, we talk about equality and equity and equal application under the law. And you don't include... You don't even mention one of the most progressive movements of our time, Black Lives Matter. Just recently, I advocated and many of our residents have advocated and showed our disappointment in the mayor's decision to bring on a bad apple... rehire a bad apple cop and total disregard for Black Lives Matter, police brutality. And the experience my race and the majority of people that look like me who are black and brown have endured for centuries. So, we look at gun violence. We have 40 murders this year. You know, plus or minus a few over the past 10 years at the same levels of gun violence in this city because of a lack of opportunity. That's the cause of it. Not because of any police director. Because of a lack of opportunity, a lack of decent education, a lack of fair housing, application of fair housing laws, homeownership, a lack of jobs, a lack of vocational training.
Ms. Vaughn?
That resolution doesn't speak to that, and I want that roll call, and I want some edits in there. I don't know who wrote it or who introduced it. But I think it's fair to let folks know who did. So, I want folks to, before this council vote on it, I want some... I want it to be more inclusive and to talk about the most critical issue, the most critical movement of our time. Not some crazy fiends who raided unjustly our Capitol.
Councilwoman.
The black community is under terrorist terrorism every day. Our kids cannot go outside without getting shot.
Councilwoman.
And our government doesn't want to address that, but they want to worry about some crazy...
Councilwoman.
...people who went down to the Capitol. Don't interrupt me, Council.
No, I want to ask you something so that you don't go on for hours. If only we find out who the sponsor is. If you can't finish speaking, point of order.
I am.
We need to find out who the sponsor is, and I would like to ask Mr. Cruz if this is being sponsored by the administration.
We wrote it with the assistance of the Anti-Defamation League.
Can we please miss... Let me talk to Ms. Vaughn after the meeting or tomorrow so that she can have some input and talk to these people? Mr. Cruz?
I... Yes, she can have... We can have a conversation.
Okay.
Well, what I would like...
Do you have a phone?
Well, I would like... I hope whoever introduced it is on this line tonight.
I'm trying to offer you an opportunity to be able to...
To the whole entire city, Council Vice President.
While someone else is speaking. It's very rude.
Why are you... Wait a minute. I asked you to speak and you yielded me the floor. Now, you asked me the question and now you continue to talk. So, I'm not the rude one here.
I have to resolve this for you.
Go ahead and speak, my friend. Go ahead and speak.
I asked you... You asked who the sponsor was, and I made an attempt to find out. And I just gave you the information and asked Mr. Cruz to send it to you.
Okay.
Because you can't do political grandstanding at a council meeting.
Again, Council, wait a minute. I'm a duly elected official. I'm not grandstanding. I represent 20,000 constituents. You call this grandstanding? Oh, so when an African-American woman advocates for justice, I'm grandstanding?
A point of order. This is Council President.
So, I'm not grandstanding. I'm representing a city that's majority black and brown. And I want... And I'm going to have my say, and I yield the floor.
A point of order.
And then besides, I just want to say one thing, Council President.
President wants to speak.
Well, I want to say one thing. I want to know who the person is, the name of the person who introduced that order. And it's not an organization. Give me the name of the person, Mr. Cruz. I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Give it a name, Mr. Cruz. Give it a name.
On the resolution, it has the name of Adam Cruz, Business Administrator.
No, you said the Anti-Defamation League. Who introduced that order?
Ladies and gentlemen, there's a point of order on the floor.
I asked for a point of order. Can we... Mr. Cruz, can we table this resolution until we be able to have an in-depth conversation about this particular resolution? Would the administration just go ahead and table it for us? Or pull it for us? Or do you want the council to do it? But I think it would be better because you are presenting it if you pull it. So, is that... I believe that is a fair way to do this.
Madam President, at your request, we can pull it for this meeting, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz. And that'll give us time to go back over it and have an in-depth conversation about this. Thank you. Thank you, Vice Chair.
Thank you. You can move on, Mr. Colin.
Yes, ma'am. Next, we have Resolution 21-023. Resolution authorizing a contract to She International for the purchase of Open Gov Cloud Budget System through New Jersey State Contract Number M-0003895... I'm sorry, 8985. In an amount not to 2,000,000.
President, Caldwell Wilson?
Yes.
Yes.
I have a question about this. Can we have the business administrator explain the utility of this application? It seems a little expensive, and I just want to make sure that, you know, for the public's benefit that we are spending money, you know, prudently on this initiative and program.
Yes, so...
Yeah, that's from Mr. Cruz. Thank you.
Madam President, may I?
Mr. Cruz?
Uh, yes. There's a really... There's a lot of feedback. I'm having a hard time speaking.
Yeah, I'm looking for the second place. If I take a help.
Mr. Cruz, try and do that.
Still. It's getting worse.
Mr. Colin, this sound is terrible.
Okay. It appears that they got it.
If he's on speaker, get off speaker.
It appears that they got it. I... Okay, so thank you, Madam Vice President, Councilwoman Blakely. This application is actually for us to improve the process of the budget, of the budget that we do each year. This will allow not just me, I've been in finance, but also directors and council members to actually be able to go into the... There we go again. Test. Okay. It would allow the opportunity for council members as well as directors to actually log on to the system and be able to do real-time checking as to not just line items but also departments. This is also going to assist us tremendously in switching from the fiscal year to a calendar year. It sounds like it may be a lot of money, but it's actually bringing the city to the next century of technology.
Can you tell me? I just had one more follow-up question about this matter. Can you let me know what other municipalities have this software and program?
I will try to get that for you before Thursday.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Councilwoman, Vice Chair, may I say... May I ask a question?
Go ahead, President.
Well, my concern about this system is that it appears that the administration used this system and we're about to... And in their introduction to the budget, they are asking for a $2.60 tax increase with this system that they're asking us to bring on. Now, my question to the administration is the same that I had on Thursday. If you use this system and it delivered us a $2.60 increase to our businesses and our residents, and I believe if I'm correct, every other municipality throughout the state has a flat of no increase, a flat rate, there is no increase for no other municipalities but Trenton. So, first, I need to... I need Mr. Cruz to tell me, and I need Mr. Colin to look up the fact if Trenton is the only municipality asking their residents for a tax increase. And then I would like to talk about if this system is the system that you've used and is delivering us an increase to our residents and our businesses, then what benefit is it to the residents and the taxpayers of Trenton? I need some answers because it doesn't make sense.
So, Madam President, so the introduced budget doesn't have a $2.00 change in an increase on the taxes. It is 9.8 cents with the introduced budget. The... That the budget software is actually something that we will use for us to create the budget. Not necessarily that this budget is coming from this software. Like, we put data in and then we... The software does calculations for us and it provides reports. So, it's really not an increase of $2 simply because we're buying the software. The software is $89,000, and that is it. I'm not sure where you're getting the other $2.40.
I'm talking about the introduction of the budget. The budget, they said, $2.60 increase.
No. Go ahead. I'm sorry, Madam President. I interrupted you.
No, I thought those were the numbers that was in the introduced budget for the increase to the taxpayers.
No, Madam President, it is actually 9.8 cents in the introduced budget. And...
From you, Mr. Cruz, if every other municipality throughout the state of New Jersey had an increase in their taxes through this COVID or all of them, were they exempt from increasing their taxes? That's what I would like from you and Mr. Colin to answer for me.
Yeah, I can... I guess we can call around, Madam President, other municipalities and see what was their tax increases. I mean, we can do some municipalities in the county of Mercer and go from there. But the... I think what DCA meant when we had a meeting with them was that we were actually the municipality that had not introduced a budget. Not necessarily that we had... That other municipalities had introduced a 0% budget. I mean, it's 565 municipalities in the state of New Jersey. So, it will be impossible to say that all those municipalities submitted a 0% tax increase for their constituents. But I... We can do some of the research.
Well, Council President, may I speak? Hello? Council President?
Mr. Blakely, are you finished with your question?
I just asked two follow-up questions, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So, I wanted to know... So, this particular program is simply a management system that we would use to increase transparency and efficiency in government. The question that I have is, are there any ways with this program that we can share information with the public? I think increasing the transparency of the budget to our constituents would be really important. And I'm curious if this particular program has any public-facing data information so our constituents can know more about city government.
Yes.
Actually, background info, noise coming personally from you, and then I think another source. Mr. Cruz, try again, please.
Yes, okay, thank you. Councilman, when you talk about transparency, that is exactly where this software is going to take us. Because anyone, as I mentioned, any of the council members will have the ability at any time, in real time, going to a line item, going to department budget, and be able to pull any report that you wish to pull. That was the intent of getting this software. Currently, the software that we use is Edmund. It is a software that I'm not going to say is outdated, but it's not as user-friendly as this budget system is going to be.
So, just to be clear, we're replacing the current budget management system with this particular program.
This is going to be specifically for the... Yes, for the budget, yes.
I'm going to be using Edmunds anymore.
But finance will continue to use Edmunds, but we are going to be pulling the information from Edmund to make it more user-friendly for, as I mentioned, for directors as well as council members.
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate the importance of if you can let me know what other municipalities believe or feel about this particular program. I'd really appreciate it and what other municipalities have used this actual program. Thank you so much.
Sure, sure. No problem.
Councilwoman Vaughn?
Council Vice President?
Yes, go ahead, Councilwoman.
Okay, I agree with some of the things that Councilman Blakely talked about around understanding what other organizations use the software and, you know, has it been proven to be effective and efficient? But my question is mainly is what Council President McBride alluded to. Here we are in a budget crisis in the city of Trenton. We're fiscally distressed. We're still under MOU, which our mayor and our business administrator has done nothing to get us moving forward and out from the MOU, which is an executive, a mayor, and business administrator job, along with the law department, to get their city out from regulatory oversight. We've been under regulatory oversight for 10 years now, and none of our leaders to date have been able to get us out from under it. So, and here we are today in a fiscal crisis, a budget crisis. The budget had been introduced late for whatever the reason. We still haven't gotten it in. Out of the 565 municipalities, every other municipalities were able to get their budget in our time and by the law, right? Follow the law. Trinity of Trenton just don't understand what the law is. And here we are, ready to spend more money, $82,760. And we're in a budget crisis. Now, what management? What kind of management? What... Who's running our city that we are in a budget? That we are in a budget crisis about to increase our taxpayers, our our mayor proposed, the executive of our city proposed a two point six percent increase in our taxes, but yet he wants to spend more money. That he knows that we cannot afford. We are coming out of COVID, people are unemployed, people are losing their homes, people are getting evicted, people can't afford healthcare, can't even get a vaccination. And here he is spending more money. I don't get it. So I'm with Council President on this. Tell me, this is eighty two thousand seven hundred and seventy six dollars for the software. But Mr. Cruz, can you tell me what the ongoing maintenance of this will be? What what the training will cost? Because anytime you install software, software ain't the end of the game, right? So overall, how much of this thing be cost us to get it up and running? User adoption strategies, training, ongoing maintenance contract, service level agreements, how much is this thing gonna cost us overall? Can you get back to me with that or is that in the contract?
I can give you the number right now. Can I give you the number now?
Oh, absolutely.
Eighty two thousand seven hundred and seventy six dollars.
That that's everything?
That is everything, and we have already trained somebody from inside of the city to be able to provide trainings, not just for directors, but also for council members.
I I I just, you know, okay, thank you. You answered a question, but you know, I I find that very difficult to believe that a software company I'm looking at them online, that they're rolling out a s- of 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 selling a software to a organization. And there's no other ongoing maintenance or service level agreements associated with that. But okay, if you say so, Mr. Cruz, thank you.
Does that, does anyone want to roll call this?
Yes, I do, Councilwoman.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. Would you like me to proceed?
Go ahead, Mr. Colin.
Yes, ma'am. Next, we have Resolution twenty one dash zero twenty four. A resolution accepting bids and awarding contract to Security Guard Inc. Trading as tri-county security for adult crossing guard services at the intersections of Leiler Street and Route one twenty nine for a period of two years at seventy seven thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars and forty cents per year in an amount not to exceed one hundred and fifty five thousand five hundred dollars and eighty cents through bid twenty twenty dash thirty eight.
I have a question.
Wait, wait, make the common measure longer.
Do you hear me, Councilman Blakely?
Go ahead, Councilmember.
Thank you. So um I have a few questions about this particular uh contract. Um so I see it's for two years. Is there any particular reason, Director Coley, that we are not hiring in-house uh for that particular position? And uh I'll start with that question, and I have uh follow up questions as well.
I I'm sorry, um Council, um Vice President, am I allowed to speak?
Yes, go ahead.
All right, um Councilman Blakely, it is my understanding that this is um a contract that that was brought on the floor by um previous administrations, um namely council members um because of the number of pedestrians that were struck and killed there. Um I myself I started asking the questions because I believe that's either a county or a state road. So I didn't know why we were taking on the burden of paying a pay across. And those are the answers that I would ask and ask.
Well, the question, uh the question, thank you so much for answering that question. The question that I have is, I'm not necessarily opposed to a crossing guard. But I think that hiring a contractor who is under no obligation to hire for hire Trentonians would not be the best way to go. If we were to take that in-house, even if we were to offer the position uh to some folks part time, you know, not pay benefits, but it still would allow us the ability to hire uh Trentonians. Uh a hundred and forty thousand dollars roughly is a lot of money to spend uh for uh crossing guards when, you know, we could do that in-house and ensure that we're hiring Trentonians first. Is there any um information that would or is there any conditions on this particular contract that would guarantee that Trentonians uh were hired in this particular role?
Uh no, sir, because this company has had this contract now for a number of years. Um so also, so all of the previous conditions, this would be basically like um a continuation or a renewal, if you will. But um I agree that perhaps we should take um a better look at it. I just did not want to not have anyone there. There, but um if I can pull this and speak to you tomorrow about about um although we probably hired them for Board of Ed, but there may be some conditions where we could hire them for this position as well.
Yeah, no, I think that would be a good thing. I don't wanna preclude us having no one uh at that intersection. Uh so I wanna make sure that we have enough coverage.
Do it on your phone, your phone?
What's that? Oh, I think someone's talking. So I just wanna make sure that.
Excuse me, Council. Whoever has their phone, all you need their phone, so the councilmen can be heard. We we shouldn't have to keep saying that over and over again. We cannot.
And Councilman, a lot of the a lot of the feedback is actually coming from your device. I don't know why. That's actually what's causing the echo. So it is coming in your right ear. I apologize.
Okay, yeah, I just got a new computer from the city that's not working, so I'll log on my city cellphone and so I'll hop back on um because I'm continuing. So I'll hop right back on because I'm gonna follow up on these questions. I'll be logged on on another uh device uh momentarily.
Yes, sir. We'll wait, sir.
Um so, uh Director Coley, this is Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson.
Um yes, ma'am.
The this contract isn't due until it starts July the first, two thousand and twenty. So do you think maybe you would want to just pull this right now and and check into our other options?
Uh yes, ma'am. That's what um I suggested to uh Councilman Blakely, that I would be happy to pull it because I do actually agree that there should be someone from um inside and perhaps we can extend the duties of the um cross guards or hire crossing guards specifically for this post. Um that is a lot of money and that's what caused me to question it. And uh and to be given the answers that I was given and as I related them to the um councilman. So I'd be happy to pull this one.
Okay, thank you.
I'm back on. Yeah, I'm back on uh.
Um Councilman Blakely, the the director has agreed to pull it and further investigate our options.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Colin.
Yes, ma'am. Next, we have Resolution twenty one dash oh twenty five, a resolution authorizing pay. So noted. Next, we have Resolution twenty one dash oh twenty six, a resolution authorizing payment for a contract with Winzinger Inc. awarded on an emergency basis for demolition services at one twenty two Tyler Street in the city of Trenton not to exceed forty five thousand dollars.
Council Vice President Caldwell-Wilson?
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Yeah, um it's Ben Delisle on the line.
I'm here.
Yes, so you know, your pool, your eleven point five million seems like it's it's just, where are you getting all this money from? Because I I wanna know what's how much how much is left, because I think you expended most of it already to date, right?
Council Vice President, is okay respond?
I I just wanna know what's left of the eleven point five million that was uh allocated for this uh for this effort for demolition services.
Go ahead, Mr. Delisle.
Thank you, Council Vice President. Um Councilwoman, these are private properties, so this is actually using city capital dollars. Um but I can get you the answer. I don't have the the figure in front of me on the amount of money left in the uh eleven point five, but I'd be happy to get that to you as soon as I can.
Wait a minute, I I all right, uh very well. Yeah, please. And um and along with that list of eleven point five, like what properties have been demoed and at what cost, right? The full report. And then um so so you said that this is for private properties? So how how can the city be, how can the government be demolishing property that belongs to private citizens?
So these are properties that were deemed imminent hazards by the construction code official or the the building subcode official, excuse me. Um we um sent them notices to the private owners. They didn't uh comply in a timely manner. So we take the properties down for the public safety and then place a lien on the property for the cost of the um uh the demolition. And again, that's why these are done on an emergency basis.
Okay, is the law department on the line?
Yes.
Okay, so um are you sending out the letters to this to these uh folks to let them know? What is the what is the legal aspect of this, of of government taking um coming in and uh condemning privately owned property? What is the process?
Uh I I don't think I understand your question.
What, I mean, are you, is the law department sending in involved in this uh uh transfer of 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 city um confiscation, if I lack a better term, of of private property and deeming it um?
That's illegal. That's illegal. He's quiet and that's illegal.
Okay, please, please mute that person. If they speak again, please remove them from the meeting. Please do not interrupt the council again. Thank you, Miss Vaughn. I'm sorry.
I I'm just trying to understand the law of a government. Uh hey, it could happen to me. I don't know. What what is the criteria? How long does it take? How many warnings um is is given, how many warnings are given? Uh am I taking the court? Um do I have an opportunity, a due process to fix my property before the city comes in and demo it? How come the city let it go for so long to the point where I don't understand how someone's property can reach demolition level when there were ample opportunities? I mean, at what point did you, did the law department notify these residents that their home was not compliant with city codes?
If um I'll let I'll let Mr. Delisle talk to that. My understanding is that we have attorneys specifically assigned to Mr. Delisle's department to address those your address your issues. But I'll let Mr. Delisle and or uh Ms. Samuel.
Okay, so thank you, Mr. Uh there, we have an attorney assigned to the economic development department that addressed addresses a a government confiscation, uh confiscation of private property and 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 condemning it?
Again, I'll let Mr. Delisle address that, yes. Councilwoman, these these properties, when I say they're emergencies, they were fires in some instances. The house caught fire and we did an emergency contract to take down what was remaining of the structure. Uh these are not just dilapidated houses or houses that um you know are are violation of code. Certainly, we would pursue them to fix the houses, but these are true emergencies. Um a wall suddenly collapsed uh out into the sidewalk or bricks are falling into the sidewalk.
Okay.
These types of emergencies, these these are not, these are extraordinary circumstances for the most part. Um yeah, this is um.
Okay, but it's now not articulating it properly, properly then. Okay, um granted, there's a fire. But homeowners have homeowner insurance when there's a fire, right? And they have an opportunity to fix it and get it rebuilt out and everything, right? I'm just trying to figure out, again, Mr. Bridges, what is the legal process before it gets taken from the private owner to the government of the city of Trenton, deem it uh inhabitable and and tearing it down? That's all. Does it transfer to ownership at some juncture the city has taken ownership of it, right?
That's correct. There's requisite notices that must go out. There's timing that must go out, a waiting period opportunity for the owner, to the extent that they're able to be located and or care about the property to respond and and take the necessary steps to get it up to code. And if that doesn't happen, as it seems in this case, because it's emergency properties that are falling down, crumbling, not being maintained, that those, when those notices go out and that time period elapses, that um the city will in its right do what needs to be done to not only avoid liability exposure at some point in time that will come to, that will come on be on behalf of the city, but also liability with respect to doing it improperly. If these were being done improperly, there is obviously a mechanism in court to challenge that. And there are there there are recourses for the uh the owners to the extent that the proper procedure is not filed. I've not been aware, made aware of any of those, but there is a a very specific process. Again, uh uh I I defer to Mr. Delisle. He has attorneys that he is working with, both internally and externally, to adhere compliance with that.
Um well, okay, very well. So who is the attorney, Mr. Delisle, that you're working with on these properties?
On on Sally Samuel.
You have an attorney assigned to, uh I guess, we we have a attorney for the city of Trenton that 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 focus on demolition of properties or, I don't know, who who's the attorney?
Yeah, I don't I don't have an attorney that focuses exclusively or exclusively on demolitions. But Sally Samuel is assistant municipal attorney who uh delegates most of her time to housing and economic development matters. Whether it's the land sales, auctions, redevelopment agreements, um affordability controls, those sorts of things.
Oh, okay. I mean, again, the the question has to be asked. Uh I'm concerned that sometimes government oversteps its um its powers. Uh and and that is troublesome that you you stated that these are private properties. I don't, I would like, i- i- if if the law department can send me um the law around this type of activity, uh I would much appreciate it.
Miss uh Councilwoman Vaughn, do you have a specific instance or is there something specifically you're looking for? Are you just talking hypothetically overarching, the overarching process process in general? I'm just trying to be grand.
All right, all right, I'm gonna be specific. Let's do Resolution, just 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 do Resolution twenty one oh two six. This is a payment for a contract with uh Windsor Inc. awarded on emergency basis for one twenty two Tyler Street. So I wanna know how many times the owner of Tyler Street was engaged, how many letters went out, how many court dates they appeared in before the city said, okay, we're coming in and take, we're gonna demo this. That's what, does that make sense?
You got that. Yep, that's fine.
Okay, thank you.
President Caldwell-Wilson?
Go ahead.
Uh thank you.
Can we roll call twenty one zero twenty six, Caldwell-Wilson? Roll call zero one two oh two six.
Okay.
So I wanted to ask a few questions. I see that there are a number of uh resolutions dealing with uh the demolition of properties. You know, this is a very important issue in the city of Trenton. We have uh thousands of buildings that are abandoned that are a weight around the city of Trenton that serve to depress uh home values that also negatively contribute uh to crime in a community. And so I am very pleased uh that this is occurring, that we are now, you know, doing something about it. Now, I wanted to ask Mr. Delisle, are we actually, is this money being spent from the money from the state dealing with demolitions?
The the money from the state, um it can only be spent on city owned property.
Okay.
So the re and that work would typically be um put out to bid. Um and then would be awarding a bid and and spending that money. These particular three resolutions are using city capital, because again, they're using their their they were imminent hazards as deemed by the building subcode official, you know, from collapse or from, you know, fire or whatnot. Um and liens will be placed on the properties. Um ag- again, they're, you know, emergent emergency situations that are done um, you know, as as they arise. And that is typical, I mean, the city's been doing that, you know, certainly before I, before my tenure here at the city.
No, that's great. How many properties do you think fit that um that status that you just described?
Oh, well, councilman, there's there's a lot of properties that are, you know, challenging out in the throughout the city, but I mean, the the fires come up, you know, every other month or something like that, you know, of a property. I guess I'm just going off of just recent memory and buildings where there's, you know, a wall or a sudden collapse, something that the the emergency personnel are called out to, you know, once once a month, once every other month.
Okay, and one last question. Uh can you provide a update to the council on uh the status of the state program that del that deals with condemning and demolishing homes that are owned by the city? I I'd like to just know how many homes that we've actually uh demolished through that program, how much money we have left, and how we can how much money we have left, and how we can identify other projects that we can demolish, or many other homes that we can demolish in the city of Trenton that are city-owned. Thank you.
Sure, Councilman, if it's okay. Councilwoman Vaughn asked me a similar question just a few moments ago. If it's okay, I'd like to come back with staff, prepare, you know, a little report and then bring it back to council at the next meeting. Just so I can give you clarity and clear answers and definitive with the numbers.
Fantastic. Thank you so much, Mr. Delisle.
Mr. Delisle, if you could get that report to Mr. Conlon, he can get it out to all of us.
Sure. Thank you, Council President, Vice President.
Council President, uh, Council Vice President?
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Delisle, you said that these properties were in imminent danger of falling down, like either chimney or parts of the house falling into other people's yards or on the sidewalk. Is that correct?
Yes, or they were, you know, fire to the structure rendered it, you know, unstable.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Councilwoman Caldwell Wilson?
Go ahead, Council President.
So my question is this. If we had money that the state had given us to demolish the homes that the city owned, I'm not understanding why the recourse wasn't for the city to take these owners to court and put those cities under, put those properties under the city based on the fact that I don't even know if, once we demolished those homes, if we could even recoup anything from those homeowners legally? And how many homeowners have paid up for the houses that the city demolished? So to me, it's almost as if they're circumventing the process. Take the homes, you're supposed to take the homes and the home's supposed to belong to the city. And then they could be demolished under the money that the state gave us. They're going into capital funding or operational money and they're demolishing homes that the city is not going to be able to recoup any money from instead of taking the property and the city owning the property, then demolish the homes under the money that the state gave us, the 11.5. I just see a lot of fog here and it's not adding up to me. That's just a statement that I want to make because it's not making sense. Thank you.
President Caldwell Wilson?
Go ahead. Does anyone, does anyone have any more questions on this?
I think that President McBride actually brings up a really good point. Why, you know, it's very legitimate. That's a point that I hadn't considered. Why aren't we getting, because there's so many capital projects that we can't invest funds in the city of Trenton in terms of, you know, spending to enhance our community centers, to reopen libraries and other initiatives that we can do? Can you explain why the city is not taking possession of the property so that it will be eligible for funding through the state program? Because that's a really legitimate point.
If I may respond, in these certain instances that, you know, before the council now, it was a matter of expediency. I mean, if the house had a fire this week, we need to address it, we may need to address it right away. And that's why, they just certainly don't have the time to take title and condemn and acquire and all those sorts of things, you know, to take advantage of those demolition funds. If we can apply retroactively, we certainly will try and we have been able to do that in some circumstances. But again, these are emergency cases and that's why they're handled this way.
Council Vice President, if I may piggyback on Mr. Delisle's comment?
Go ahead.
And given, again, if I had a specific example, and this one I understand is one that I'm going to get information on, but the statute with respect to residential foreclosures is very clear. There's a time period to give notice. There's a time period to give notice to any potential lien holders, mortgage holders. There's a waiting period. So it is not an instant process, the foreclosure piece of it. I do know that we've held several auctions that have been successful, but I can only assume that based on the emergent nature of these demolitions, one of two things, either the city has not started the foreclosure process, notice and putting people on notice, or it just hasn't, either haven't done it or it hasn't finalized itself when these emergent demolitions arise.
Well, I would just say that's a legitimate answer. Can you make sure that we are very aggressive in recouping any city funds that is expended from the actual lien holders? And so we need to be very aggressive in making sure that these privately owned properties, you know, contribute to the demolition costs. And I just hope our law department is very aggressive in going after these folks. Thank you.
Council Vice President Caldwell Wilson?
Could I ask a question of Mr. Delisle? You don't mind, Mr. Delisle? So I understand that some of these properties are private and some are owned by the city. The private properties, if there was a fire, would there have been indication prior to that that the house had to be demolished?
Oh, Council Vice President, that would be a case-by-case, you know, evaluation. It may not be a fire with a vacant property. It may be occupied and there was a fire. And, you know, unfortunately, not everyone in Trenton has homeowner's insurance. If people own it free and clear, they may not have insurance. Or again, it may be a matter of expediency. And we will certainly pursue, you know, a claim with an insurance company if that's applicable or it's available to us.
But I mean, if it was occupied, then you would have the owner.
That, yes, that's true.
So our city, our inspections department has to be more aggressive in looking at some of these privately owned structures to make sure that these people are keeping them up to code. Because we really shouldn't have to be eating the expense of private properties and, you know, demolishing them. And if they're up to code, we may prevent fires too.
Absolutely, 100%. Council Vice President, this is Sally Samuel. Can I add something to the conversation?
Who, you are from where?
I'm Sally Samuel from the law department.
Yes, go ahead.
As a matter of course, Council Vice President and just to the whole entire council, usually, even though we may be expending capital funds to make these emergency demolitions, the law does provide for the city to place a lien on the properties. And we understand that maybe some of these property owners will never pay that lien or, you know, maybe, you know, they won't pay it until the time that they go to transfer the property. But in any regard, once the lien is placed, then the city has leverage at that time to then, you know, take the property through NREM tax foreclosure or through some other, you know, foreclosure process. And that's the only time, really. But, you know, the money is upfront being expended. However, there are methods in which to recoup those monies back into the city's coffers. Okay, Council Vice President Caldwell Wilson?
Councilwoman Vaughn?
Yeah, I just want to figure out, again, I guess I didn't articulate clearly what I was looking for, but I agree with all the comments and questions here this evening put forward by all my fellow council persons. But, you know, Ms. Samuels or Mr. Delisle or Mr. Bridges, can someone please tell me what the timeframe is for a house that, you know, before us, the city comes into, gets involved and makes a decision to demo? Is it the two-year foreclosure process? How long, like for instance, 21026 Tyler Street? How long did it take? Or does it vary? But is there some standard timeframe in which a owner of a home or any property before the government can come in and have any control? Like how long did it take for, like you have 21025, Barry's location? You got 122 Tyler Street. So again, have any of the professionals on the line on this subject tell me the timeline before the government comes in and takes the property and demo?
Well, I can say as a matter of course that our code officials usually are the ones that make that call. They go in and inspect. So, you know, relatively a short period of time after a fire or some other, you know, hazardous occurrence happening to a property, those officials go in and assess whether the property is in, you know, imminent, you know, you know, danger of falling or collapsing or creating another problem to an adjacent property. Once that determination is made by that subcode official, usually, you know, they do, they are required to provide notice to the owner, if there is an identifiable owner, that the property basically has been condemned or determined to be unsafe. And then at that time, they provide a certain number of days, you know, usually giving the owner, you know, a timeframe or an opportunity to either have the home demoed themselves or to get the home into a position where it's safe. If there's no response from the owner within that timeframe, then the subcode official has, you know, all within their authority and their rights pursuant to applicable local and state law to condemn the property and then it's demolished. And usually, the cost of saying is placed as a lien against the property. And that's happening in most municipalities throughout New Jersey. That's usually the process.
Well, Council Vice President, okay, so that's good. But we just, Mr. Bridges, can you just get back to me on 122 Tyler Street? Did that have a fire, Mr. Delisle? Did that property have a fire? Is that why it's being emergent, being classified as emergent? Did that have a fire? What was the issue with 122 Tyler Street?
Councilwoman, I will have to get back to you on the specifics of 122 Tyler Street.
Mr. Delisle, I have the resolution before me and it says, "A two-and-a-half-story wood-framed building, the main roof system has collapsed, forcing the exterior walls to lean outward towards the neighboring building. A total demolition must be done immediately."
Okay, so then that sounds like something that was from the building subcode official. He probably issued an imminent hazard certificate for his authority as a building subcode official, so the building just started falling apart on its own. And it was an emergency that needed to be addressed, certainly if it was leaning towards another property or occupied property. So in that particular instance, that was the emergency here.
Well, I must say, I'm online and I'm looking at it on Zillow. Looks like a nice property to me, but anyway, I got to go look at it in person. But I'm going to cruise around there and check it out, but I want to click this next door to a vacant lot. I wonder who owns that vacant lot? But anyway, Mr. Bridges, can you get back to me with that information about 122 Tyler Street, please?
Mr. Conlon?
Yes, ma'am. This is Mark for roll call. Would you like me to proceed, ma'am?
Does the gentleman want to roll call this one?
Uh, no, we do, Ms. Vaughn had already requested this before. Uh, would you like me to proceed to the next?
Go ahead.
We have Resolution 21-027, a resolution authorizing payment for a contract with Carroll Demolition, ordered on an emergency basis for demolition services at Barry's location in the city of Trenton, not to exceed $97,680.
And this is privately owned property?
Which one is this, which one is this again?
This is 133135 Mamis, oh, I'm sorry, 027. 133135 Mamis Street and 316 Rutherford Avenue, three properties. And the city of Trenton is the owner of record for all properties. So is that money, Mr. Delisle, coming out of the state monies?
We will certainly, if it's city-owned, we will certainly apply to them for that.
Okay.
Would you like to proceed, ma'am?
Go ahead.
Consent agenda or roll call, ma'am?
If no one's rolling, it would do consent.
Yes, ma'am. Next, we have Resolution 21-028, "A resolution rejecting bids received for demolitions of various structures in neighborhood redevelopment and revitalization program to revise specifications through bid 2020-085."
That would be consent. That's a rejection.
Yes, ma'am. Next, we have Resolution 21-029, "A resolution rejecting proposals received for environmental review record preparation services for the CBDG, ESG, and home program scope of services were duplicated in RFP 2020-50 and RFP 2020-49."
I got a question on that, Council Vice President Caldwell Wilson?
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Mr. Delisle, so how did we, are you reclassifying and reappropriation the funds here? I mean, what do you mean? I don't understand. How did the duplicate happen?
We issued several RFPs for services. One was specifically for doing the environmental review and after evaluating all the RFPs, found that the services could be provided under a different contract to the same consultant. So we're looking to just reject the RFP that was specific to the environmental reviews and cover those services. It's one piece of all the work that needs to be done with a different RFP, RFP 2020-50. It just was duplicative to have two separate contracts with one vendor, with one contractor.
So you consolidated, so you're consolidating a contract? Is it, are you consolidating a contract?
The services were solicited in two different RFPs, the same services.
So, and you granted?
We were redundant in our solicitation.
Okay. Was the service, did you select a service provider?
Yes. No, that's the subsequent resolution or the next in the agenda.
Oh, I see, okay. So you are consolidating under the one contractor, correct? You're moving, yeah, mhm. So with that contractor, that would be a change in scope for that contractor that was selected, correct? That would be a change in scope?
No, no, no. They were...
Okay, all right. You sent out two RFPs. They were duplicate in nature. You got responses to both, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so you didn't, you moved the services of one from RFP A to RFP B, the contractor that's dislocated?
We didn't, no, we didn't move them. We asked for those same scope of services in two RFPs. One RFP was very narrow. It only asked for the environmental review record. The other RFP asked for an array of services, including the environmental review. So rather than issuing a contract just for environmental review to one consultant and environmental review and other types of services, grant support services to a different vendor, we said we don't need it just for the environmental review. This one vendor can provide an array of services and meet the needs of the city. So we're just looking to reject the proposal. So we're just looking to reject the proposals and not award a contract under the RFP that was limited in scope for the environmental review. And that was RFP, um, twenty twenty forty-nine.
Okay.
Okay.
Mhm.
All right.
Roll call. Roll call.
Yes, ma'am. Next, we have Resolution twenty-one dash zero three zero, resolution awarding contract through fair and open process in accordance with NJSA nineteen colon forty-four cap eight twenty point four et cec to Northeast and Bucks Company, trading as Mullen and Lonergan Associates for professional program administrative services for the Community Development Block Grant, Emergency Solutions Grant and Home Investment Partnership Programs for a period of one year and an amount not to exceed seventy-five thousand dollars through RFP twenty twenty dash fifty. Floor is open.
So, um, Mr. Del, um, Council Vice President Paul Wilson?
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
So just so I'm clear, uh, so the twenty-one zero twenty twenty-nine, this is the, this is the contract that, that has been, um, uh, that's, that's now, that prevailed, right? You, you do, you got rid of the duplicate and this is the one that you want to move forward with?
Twenty, twenty, twenty dash five zero.
Thirty. Yeah, I'm gonna roll call this.
Resolution thirty.
Yeah, I'm gonna roll call this, uh, Council Vice President Paul Wilson, please. Um, I didn't get a chance to go in detail and read all of this because unfortunately, you know, uh, not to bring up, you know, our dirty laundry, uh, at the clerk's office, but, uh, but, okay, so I'm gonna roll call twenty-one zero twenty-nine and twenty-one zero thirty, uh, so I can get, look at it a little more closely. Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Collins.
Next, we have Resolution twenty-one dash zero three one. Resolution awarding contract through fair and open process in accordance with NJSA nineteen colon forty-four cap eight dash twenty point four et cec to Northeast and Bucks Company, trading as Mullen and Lonergan Associates for professional program administrative services for the Department of Housing and Economic Development, Home Investment Partnership Programs for a period of one year and an amount not to exceed fifty thousand dollars through RFP twenty twenty dash fifty-one. Floor is open.
Any questions?
Yeah, I, I, I'm, yeah, um, I guess, uh, Council Vice President, um, I do, um, uh, we're, we're hiring, uh, uh, program, professional program administrative services for the Department of Housing and Economic Development. Uh, um, you know, Mr. Delisle and, and also Mr. Cruz, the business administrator. Um, actually mainly Mr. Cruz, if he can answer this question. And I've seen this common theme over the, uh, docket over the past couple of months, uh, across several of our departments, uh, in the, uh, Parks and Recreation Department. Um, here we are in the Housing and Economic Development Department. We're outsourcing for program and project managers and, and, and administrative services professionals. You know, I don't get it. I don't understand why we just don't hire these people and work, you know, full-time from the folks in the city of Trenton. Why don't we hire res, residents to be program managers and project managers for the Housing and Economic Development Department? Uh, Mr., um, Cruz, can you explain as the business administrator of the city? Why are the department heads being allowed to contract out these services? Whereby you hire somebody with these services, we can have them over a long term. But a contract expires and then we lose the expertise and we gotta go out again. Why don't we nurture the, and develop these expertise in-house? We need project managers and program managers on a permanent basis. Why are we outsourcing everything?
Uh, um, uh, Madam President or Vice President, can I speak?
Go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Cruz.
All right, thank you. So Madam Vice President, the question Councilwoman has is actually regarding the, um, I guess individuals being hired to, uh, to be program managers. Uh, sometimes it, it is based on, on funding, uh, and also it depends on also the need of the department at the time. Uh, there may not be a need for a permanent person to be hired, uh, for, you know, for a long period of time. Uh, so when you hire somebody from, uh, to work in the city, you are actually, once they get, um, uh, once they get hired, uh, you can't just fire them when the need is over. You now have to keep them. You now have to, um, uh, pay, um, uh, health benefits and everything else. So someone who is costing the city fifty thousand dollars, it can end up costing between seventy-five to eighty thousand dollars a year when you add the health benefits to it and, uh, pension and everything else. So, um, that's the reason why it is cheaper for the city to hire, uh, somebody from the outside than getting somebody from the, uh, from, uh, uh, you know, hiring somebody on a permanent basis.
I will say that that may be so, um, partially. But I think over the long term, as far as the economic benefit for the city of Trenton and hiring its residents and training its residents, you'll get that investment back when that resident gets that job full, full-time. And when they reinvest that money, uh, into homeownership in the city and, uh, and, you know, eating and living and playing in the city. Or if it's some contractor who will never live here and who knows where they, I mean, take our money and it never gets reinvested. So I think you get the, the gist of it. I would like, and I hear from your department heads, Mr. Cruz, that they are under resource. So sometimes when you hire these contractors, sometimes, you know, they talk a good game and they come in with these high saluting resumes and then you don't get the output or productivity from them anyway. And they don't deliver what they say they're gonna deliver. So I'd rather have a resident hired full-time. We give them training. They live in a city. They invest in a city. Uh, and, and over the long term is more beneficial. And that's just my position. Thanks.
Council Vice President, this is Jerk Delisle. May I respond?
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Delisle.
Uh, Councilwoman Vaughn, your, your comments are certainly, um, well received and, and warranted. And this, we will certainly look to continue to hire folks, uh, in the department to do this. This consultant doesn't replace or substitute or act as a, uh, city employee, but provides technical assistance to the department as we continue to, uh, expand our, our capacity and our, um, training, um, in providing these services or managing the grants. So we will absolutely, uh, look to do, as you said, it's to hire folks, but that doesn't replace the need for some, you know, technical expertise, um, in the grant management.
Yeah. Mhm. Uh, so, um, can you, can we roll call this one, Council, uh, Vice President Paul Wilson and Mr. Collins?
Okay.
And Miss, and Council Vice President, uh, I just wanna make one last comment and only gonna take me two seconds.
Promise?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Um, I, uh, I just think that when we outsource and we constantly go to contract, it's all the time. It's not just one-off. Um, it's been a consistent approach by, by the mayor and his administration to outsource the city in every department. I just think it's just a master plan of circumventing the residency law. Everybody knows on this line that I'm a staunch advocate for the residency law to be, uh, in compliant. So that's all. Thank you, Council Vice President.
Okay.
Council Vice President, I would like to reply to that comment.
No, no, no. No.
No, I think we have to move on, Mr. Cruz.
Next, we have Resolution twenty-one dash zero thirty-two. Point of information?
Yes.
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll ask some other time. I'm sorry. Thank you. Next, we have Resolution twenty-one dash zero three two, resolution awarding contract through fair and open process in accordance with NJSA nineteen colon forty-four cap eight dash twenty point four et cec to Brownfield Redevelopment Solutions Inc. for professional services for environmental planning, grant management and technical consulting and environmental project management services for Trenton's Brownfield Program in an amount not to exceed ninety-six thousand one hundred and five dollars for a period of one year through RFP twenty twenty dash fifty-two.
Roll call, please.
Roll call? Yes, go ahead, Councilwoman.
I mean, here again, same comment that we're hiring, uh, professional services for environmental planning, grant management and technical consulting and environmental project management services for Trenton's Brownfield Program in an amount not to exceed ninety-six thousand. So, um, Mr., um, Delisle, just one quick question for you. Is this one person at ninety-six thousand dollars?
No, it's the firm.
Uh, but I know it's the firm, but are they allocating one resource?
No.
Or multiple resource?
M, m, multiple. It'll depend on, you know, whatever the, the projects or the needs are. But it's, the, these, none of these contracts have just one person assigned to the city.
Well, you know what? Then that, that, that's even worse because you know why? Because when a consultancy firm, when, when a business hires a consultancy firm and over a year, they don't provide you with a, a, a resource that's consistent and permanent throughout that contract, then guess what? I mean, you're not gonna get consistency in the, in the delivery of the service.
Councilwoman, you misunderstood.
And, and that's my, that's my professional opinion that if I, if I hired a consulting firm to come to my home, I would not appreciate them rotating any old willy-nilly resource. I would want a resource there that is deemed the subject matter expert, but you got a lot of stuff going on here. You want a technical consultant, environmental project manager. Oh, that sounds good. But for years, you, you gotta, this person, this firm does all of that. That's unbelievable. That's unbelievable.
Council Vice President, may I respond?
Go ahead, Mr. Delisle.
Ms. Vaughn, I think you, you misunderstood or mischaracterizing the contract. What I meant was that ninety-six thousand is not to hire one person as a consultant for the city of Trenton. Surely there's cer, there is consistency with the people that are there. But the, uh, the, the skills and the expertise is spread amongst a couple of people depending on what the needs are. Um, but it's not to hire one person as a consultant for the city. So there are, there'll be grant writers or, or an LSRP or, or a, a project principal. There'll be different people involved and it is very consistent with the people that we have. It's not, uh, a different person every, every day.
No, 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 no. I, 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 I didn't say it's gonna be a different person every day.
But I'm sorry, willy-nilly was the word you used.
No, no, you said to me, you said, Ms. Vaughn, it's gonna be, they're gonna be providing us resources. It's, I said it's gonna be one person and you said, no, it's gonna be multiple people, right? It's more than one person that works at the firm, I think you said.
Sure.
Okay, so I gotta say, because with contracts, they're very, um, interesting. Unless you don't, unless you define the book of work for that individ, that scope of work for that individual that the contract, that the owner of the company or the principal of the company, um, uh, uh, is, is, is giving to you, then, you know, I would just, you know, I, 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 I don't think, you know, co, contracting outside individuals and not developing the expertise in-house over time and nurturing that expertise and giving those, you know, hire a grant writer in the city of Trenton, right? We don't have to hire a consultancy firm to give us a grant writer. Uh, you got a, an environmental project management services? Why, why, why can't we hire a project manager that delivers environmental projects? We don't need a consultancy firm to go get that for us. I mean, I, I don't get this. A technical consulting? We have a, a, we have a top-tier, uh, a technology company right here in the city of Trenton that we just hired. I mean, top tier. Why do we need, why do we need to outsource or source technical consulting services? We don't need that. Go to, go to Kamau. I mean, he's one of the best in the field. We got him here. You already have a contract for technical services. So I don't understand why we.
It's not for IT services, Councilwoman.
Huh?
This is not for IT.
No, it, it says technical consulting. I don't know what that means. What does that mean? Is that not IT? That's technical.
That's, that's environmental. That's tanks and, and soil cleanups and air and water and hazardous waste.
Okay, okay, all right. But again, we have this going on in the city. We got environmental engineers over at the water department. We need to leverage our resources. We got engineers and, and technical people all in, in the city of Trenton that we can leverage. We don't have to go out the contract every single time. I don't, I, you know, not for this type of stuff, no. Mm-mm. But thank you.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Collins.
Next, we have Resolution twenty-one dash zero thirty-three, a resolution conditionally designating the Sixth Regiment United States Colored Troops, USCT, as redeveloper of property at block one eight zero two, lots sixteen and seventeen, seventy-three Hart Avenue, within the North Clinton Avenue Redevelopment Plan.
President, right?
Yes, Mr. Blake.
Yeah, I just wanted to speak in, in, uh, I just wanna speak in favor of this, uh, resolution. Uh, no better time like this month than we, uh, give honor to our ancestors by making sure that their resting place, uh, in the North Ward is, uh, honored and highlighted. And so I really wanna give a, um, shout-out to my good Alpha Brother, Algenon Ward, uh, Alge the Great from the Garden State, Keeper of Light, Number One Nubian Knight. I just wanna say thank you to, uh, the groups that he has, um, uh, associated with, uh, the colored, uh, troop or the colored regiment troop, who is, um, presenting this. And I just wanna say, I'm very glad that this aspect of Black Trenton history is going to be, uh, preserved and honored. So thank you so much, uh, for doing the legwork and I'm gonna be very happy and supported, uh, this important resolution to honor our history. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, I have, uh, a, a question, uh, Council Vice President Paul Wilson.
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Um, I don't know if Alge is here tonight, but I'm hoping that he's gonna speak on this during public comment.
Yeah, he probably will.
Okay, and I just wanna say, you know, of course, I, I would certainly, I'm in support of this. And actually I told Alge myself that I was in support of it. But, but we need to really iron out the kinks around the funding and et cetera, cause that hasn't been really clear. Um, and I want to make sure that we not only solidify funding for this, um, the initial funding, but the ongoing funding as well, that's gonna maintain and sustain the development of this, um, this, uh, project, right? Too often, uh, it's a one-time initial investment and then we lose, then we lose it and then the project deteriorates over time. Um, I, I hope that Alge can describe, you know, what the, uh, funding and the ongoing donor support is gonna be or a capital campaign is, has been, uh, put forward or, uh, initiated. Uh, I just, I, I just can't wait to hear how we're gonna fund this and sustain this, this project, this very important project as Councilman Blakely articulated, um, over time for, for, um, for future generations to enjoy and, and, and gain knowledge of. Thanks.
Thank you. So I, so I wanna say I'm supporter, very supportive of the, this project. And, and you're, you're absolutely correct, Councilwoman. There are some things that have to be ironed out. But it's my understanding, in order to enable this group to be able to apply for grants, they first of all have to have this agreement with the city of Trenton. And they are going to be stationed there. The troops are going to be stationed there on the second floor. And the basement will be where they will keep their records. So there will be someone there, I'm assuming, each and every day, um, when they get this muse, the mini museum together to be available to the public. And they will, at that point, especially with the Greenway Project, that, that's going to be down in that whole area that's going to cover the graveyard. Um, I believe that they are going to have the ability with the help of other partners to be able to apply for funding to maintain it. And we'll have Algenon speak in public session to explain it further. Any other questions?
Council Vice President? Council Vice President?
Yes, Mr. Harris.
I'm glad to see that, uh, I'm glad to see that, uh, most of every, I think everybody on this council should be in support of this. I think this is wonderful. Um, it's, it's.
this council should be in support of this. I think this is wonderful. It's, it's something that we should all come together and support. It's a wonderful ideal, and kudos to Algenon work.
Thank you. Shall we make this consent?
Yes, ma'am. Next, we have Resolution twenty-one dash zero thirty-four, resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a redevelopment agreement with the Vessel Technologies, Inc., for certain city-owned property commonly known as one-twenty-one through one-twenty-five Perry Street, Trenton, New Jersey, within the Canal Banks redevelopment area.
I want to say something on this. Not only did this company come to City Council and make a presentation of their plan for these six apartments, but we also had a virtual community meeting today, and the owner will be speaking to the Reverend Taylor, whose church is right across the street and deals with all the crime and whatever. I think it's a wonderful project, and, you know, I mean, it's up to the council members, but I think this is, this is going to be a really incentive for this developer, and if it turns out very successful, I believe that we will have more development in the city of Trenton by this person. Thank you.
Uh, Council Vice President Caldwell Wilson?
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Okay. I agree. And of course, I'll be supportive of this as well. But one thing that I would like our council to do, and I'm not trying to, again, air the council's dirty laundry, but we have, I don't know if this had gone out to RV Development Attorney, Mr. John Hoffman, but I don't think it has, because I haven't seen a legal opinion on it. So, is Mr. Delisle here?
Mr. Delisle? Go ahead.
Um, am I correct? I mean, sometimes Mr. Hoffman has a habit of, you know, when the council sends out for his legal opinion on certain redevelopment initiatives, he always feels as though, you know, it's nice, he's a very gracious and inclusive gentleman. He always notifies you. Were you notified that, and was this particular development effort initiative given to Mr. Hoffman, the council's redevelopment attorney, for review?
Yes. And he responded, he reviewed, responded with a memo?
He did get a memo.
How come I didn't see it? Okay. So, anyway, I will look for it in my email. And I guess, are we voting for them as the designated redeceiver?
No, they...
Is, I mean, are we following the redevelopment process? Pardon me?
Yeah, we're authorizing the execution of a redevelopment agreement with them. And when I, when we had the community meeting today, they are going to hire local, and have requested in various areas, including the city, of local contractors. And we will have a manager in there that will be local, and they will have parking behind it.
Okay.
Let me also chime in.
So, the reason why, wait a minute, wait a minute, I'm not finished yet.
Okay.
Okay. What I wanted to, the reason why I said that, you know, I think that we have to designate them, the redevelopment, identify them as, as the redevelopment, designated redeceiver, because we haven't heard from them as to what their plan is, right? Us as the redevelopment party. Wait, why, why are women, please, I just want to finish my question, because I don't understand what the tax implications are. Are they gonna be asking for pilots? Are they coming on? Are they gonna be...
No private money, no pilot.
No, no, no pilot? They're not gonna ask for tax reduction?
Nope.
Except, please.
Okay. So, but see, this is the reason why we need to have them, we need to have a public meeting with them, so they could tell us what they're gonna bring to the community.
They came to council and made a presentation.
I don't remember them.
Yes, they did.
I'm sorry, I don't...
Not only did they, but Mr. Hoffman initially rejected it, and it was resubmitted with changes.
Okay. Well, again, I, all right, so, again, I don't remember this.
Councilwoman?
All right, wait a minute now. Mr. Council Vice President, I have the floor, and all these people keep interrupting me.
Go ahead.
So, again, now that we're designating them the redeceiver, then they need to come back to council, and they need to have a couple of meetings in the community down there. And I don't think we've been doing a great job in that area.
We had a community meeting today.
I know, but how many people, and, and where was it advertised? Any newspapers? Has it been advertised? Has it been widely advertised, Council Vice President? I don't, I don't get when you guys say, oh, we...
Conversation with you, Councilwomen.
Okay, I'm asked, I just asked a question. Has it been widely advertised? Because I could bet you, I could ask any of the community out there, they're gonna say that they don't know anything about it. So, again, Mr. Delisle, can you answer the question? Has it been widely advertised?
Council Vice President, if it's okay, if I'll respond. And Councilwoman, just to address some of your earlier questions or concerns, the council did hear a presentation from this developer back in October, in which they were designated as the redeceiver for the property. We have since negotiated a redevelopment agreement with the developer, which was, once it was finalized, we sent it to John Hoffman for his review. He provided a, his review and some, some minor suggestions. We subsequently amended or made those corrections to the redevelopment agreement, which I sent to the clerk today. So, I'd like to have that be the final version that's accepted or adopted by the council. The action before council is to provide the mayor with the authorization to execute that redevelopment agreement.
Okay. But the redevelopment agreement, Mr. Delisle, with all due respect, the redevelopment agreement, after Mr. Hoffman is only our attorney for us in the city, we represent the residents and taxpayers of the city. Although this is out in the North Ward, but every resident of the city of Trenton is supposed to be notified when there's any redevelopment going on in our city, regardless of what ward it's in.
All right, Council, Councilwoman, if I could finish my statement.
Somebody need to mute again.
This...
Mr. Conner?
Someone is interrupt, someone needs to...
Councilwoman, so, just to, just to finish, this is, if you recall, this is a fairly small project. It's an infill building. It's, it's just six units. And it will be going through the planning board process, as well as the landmarks, because it is an historic district. As Councilwoman Caldwell Wilson mentioned, they did go to a community meeting today. All the people within two hundred feet of the project will be notified when it's before the, the planning board. So, and of course, the planning process when the redevelopment plan was adopted was a very public process, and this is implementing that plan that was adopted by council. So...
All right. Let me explain to you again. No, even though my understanding of redevelopment law is, there's no such thing as a small redevelopment project, and you don't have to follow the redevelopment law. No matter how small, I just want everybody who's on this call, Trentonians, to know, no matter how small, if something is labeled redevelopment, that is your property. That is your prime real estate. That area has been deemed by the state instrumental to our re, of our economic development. That, our fiscal health of the city long-term depends on those areas. So, anytime there's changes to redevelopment land or property that we own as taxpayers of the city, it's major. So, don't, it's like, people, when a doctor, there's no such thing as minor surgery, right? Every surgery, anytime a doctor cuts you, it's major surgery. So, when somebody tells you, oh, that's a redevelopment project, it's a small, it's just one house. No. A redevelopment project, no matter how small, it fits into the broader scheme of the overall transformation of our city. So, that project that's going down there, the Vessel Technology, Perry Street, that's supposed to tell us, supposed to be part of the overall redevelopment plan for the, all of the city of Trenton. So, any little piece of the puzzle matters, Mr. Delisle. And I know Mr. Delisle would agree. So, all I'm saying to my council members, as the redevelopment authority, we need to remain cognizant of that. And, and as such, we need to let everybody know, whether it's North Ward, South Ward, East Ward, whatever, when there's something, when, when something is impacting our redevelopment zones, everybody in the city of Trenton need to know about it. We need to be invited, not just a select few. That's not it. And I just, I just want my council members, council president and council vice president, that we really need to do this process. We, we've been telling ourselves since the day one we came on, that we were gonna build out the redevelopment, the redevelopment council, the redevelopment authority. We need to either do it at this council and do it well. We have top-notch attorney to do it, or we need to appoint a committee to do it. But right now, suffice it to say, and unfortunately, we're two years in, we really don't have a plan around redevelopment. And I think we need to work on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council, Council Vice President?
Yes, Mr. Harrison.
This was approved by the redevelopment attorney to represent the city council, correct? Mr. Delisle?
But it wasn't a plan, it wasn't approved by the city?
I was speaking to you. I was speaking to Mr. Delisle. Please, don't cut me off. Mr. Delisle, it was, could you answer it again? I couldn't hear you.
The, the agreement was sent to Mr. Hoffman for his review. He gave us some comments. We've incorporated those comments into the redevelopment agreement.
Okay. So, second question.
Question, Councilman, is yes.
Okay. Second question. Vice President Caldwell Wilson, you had a meeting today. What was the feeling from your constituents?
They were very happy. They were, they were very happy with the design. It's very innovative. It's very green. And there was also some professionals on there. There was a planner on, on there, and they were very happy with it. They were also very happy with the fact that they are going to, everything's going to be hire local.
Thank you. I also want to say, we did get, back in October, they came in front of us and gave us a, a meeting about this whole proposal. So, I just said, at the end of the day, our redevelopment attorneys worked for it, the people living in the North Ward are for it. I think it's a wonderful proposal. So, I'm totally for this. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Vice President?
Yes, Mr., yes, Mr. Santiago. You were at the meeting today.
Yes, and I'm a, a thousand percent in favor of that project. One-twenty-one, two years ago, I was given a complaint by one of the residents in Perry Street. That area, there's not too many people living there now. Used to be a very, a lot of people used to live there, but most of the buildings, they are vacant. As a matter of fact, one-twenty-five used to be a restaurant. I used to eat there. One-twenty, I used to live in one-twenty-seven. I lived there for about five years. And one-twenty-one was falling apart, and I complained to the city, and it was demolished, along with one-twenty-three and one-twenty-five. That was less than two years ago. If we're gonna have a development there now, that is great. That is great, because that will be, make that neighborhood look good, so that from there, we could start fixing one-twenty-seven again, that is vacant, and one-twenty-nine, most of that block, except for one...
We lost him. We lost him, Mr. Santiago. Mr. Conner, I think we lost him.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna contact him now, ma'am. Let him know he's off. Hold on.
So, Council Vice President Caldwell Wilson?
Yes.
As you know, I was not at the meeting. But, so how much of, how much will this bring in our tax rules?
That I'm not sure of. That I don't know.
Okay.
But there, you know, there is six rental, is six apartments, beautiful apartments.
Market rate?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Delisle, do you know what the taxes would be on that?
I, I do not.
It has to be assessed when it's built, right?
Correct. It would have to be assessed.
The only thing I have concern with, I would just ask, as the redevelopment, as part of the redevelopment authority, is again, why are we constantly going to rentals? Are these gonna be condos?
This, he's, he's not only planning this for rentals, because it's such a small building, but he's, he's also planning and doing market rate houses eventually. And he's talking to the city about doing redevelopment, and the, the building itself is very innovative. I mean, it's just the air, they, they conserve an energy, they have ways of, and I'm not, I'm, I'm not tech, technologically, I'm not good, so I can't explain it to you, but I'm sure Mr. Delisle could. But they did do a presentation to council when they came as, to be the redeceiver.
Yeah, I, I, yeah. I'm getting old, so I don't remember. So, Council Vice President, just one last question before Councilman Rodriguez returns. So, when we do a redevelopment in those areas like that, in Perry Street, you know, that is...
This is right directly, almost across from the church.
Yeah, yep, yep, I know exactly. Is, is there a requirement, Mr. Delisle may be able to answer the question as well, for, when builders come in, redevelopers, is there a law in the redevelopment area that, that, that forces them to stay aligned with the architecture of that area?
They would have to follow, they would have to follow the redevelopment plan.
Okay.
Particular redevelopment plan doesn't require particular architecture.
But they are, they want to maintain the historic integrity in the area.
Yeah, I would, I would like that as well, you know, although I don't live over there and it's not my ward, Vice President Caldwell Wilson. But, but I know a developer built a home up in Hiltonia that does not even go with the aesthetic of the neighborhood. It looks awful. So, I wouldn't want that to continue to happen. I, I would hope that when it comes to...
This is a Canal Banks district, and that is a whole historic district, so they have to meet certain standards.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, and, and Mr. Delisle, as the Director of Economic Development, I would think that, you know, you know, we want to, and Trenton is a historic city, right? And, and we have beautiful architecture, and we should adhere to that. And that's something that we could talk about when we go, Council Vice President, Council President McBride, when we start building out our redevelopment plan and our checklist. We said we're gonna have a checklist, and we just haven't really solidified it yet.
Is Mr. Santiago Rodriguez back on?
Yes, I'm back. I, I finished with my statement.
Any more questions? Excuse me.
How'd you like this list, Ben?
I mean, unless someone wants a roll call, I would say consent.
Yes, ma'am. Next, we're moving to Resolution twenty-one dash zero thirty-five, a resolution to appoint members to a working committee to assist the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs' Office of Local Planning Services.
Okay. Mr. Delisle, change it to the two-fifty plan, correct?
No. This is to do a study and to evaluate and potentially rewrite the redevelopment plans for the downtown area.
Yeah, but the redevelopment plan for the downtown area is, is a subset of the redevelopment plan, right?
Plan.
A redevelopment plan cannot be a subset of a redevelopment plan.
No, what, no, no. I said of the two-fifty plan. No, what, no, no, I said, of the 250 plan, you can't run circles around me, sir. So, back to my question, 21, zero thirty-five, a resolution to appoint members to a working committee to assist the New Department, New Jersey Department of Community Affairs, so what area are they going to be, uh, uh, reviewing?
Redevelopment plans in the downtown area.
So are they gonna make those changes to the 250 plan?
The, the 250 is a master plan, that is not, that is not being touched, that is not part of the study. The redevelopment plans are enabling ordinances that, uh, are actionable, that you can designate developers to, and that they can build in accordance with, but they are, that's, and they're pursuant to the local housing and redevelopment law, not to the land use, which would be the, um, uh, or the master plan.
Okay, so, all right.
So they're, they're different areas, they're different areas of plan.
I understand, but it should, whatever changes they're making, they are gonna be aligning it to the 250 plan, right, the master plan?
Oh, they certainly should, they certainly will not be contrary to the master plan, no. No, and, and, and look, any changes that they recommend to the mast, to the redevelopment plan would have to come back to city council and be adopted by ordinance.
Okay. All right, Mr. Delisle, all right, um, I, I know how to, I know how we supposed to adopt ordinances. So, um, 21, zero three five, I just have one last question for you, Mr. Delisle, so who, again, is gonna be on this working committee, and who's gonna appoint the members?
The, the, the list of members is in the resolution. Now, the, in, we don't have individual names, we have organizations, right, because there's a long list there, and that people may change, um, but this is permissive, right, this is saying that all these folks can be part of this working committee.
Okay, but, okay, so I'm asking you, who is going to appoint them? I'm sorry, I didn't read the details yet, because again, something happened that I wasn't able to read, um, everything tonight, but a resolution to appoint the members, who's gonna do the appointing?
The, the list of members is, is in the resolution, so you're doing that by enacting this resolution.
No, 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 uh-uh, no.
Councilwoman, the mayor will appoint, it says, the, um, the mayor will appoint, um, or a des, a municipal designee with the approval of city council, and there will be a city council person designated by council president, and the mayor or a designee shall be ex-facto.
Right.
How many, and, and, and council vice president, I'm sorry, how many members?
Well, there's, there's a billion members, but there will be one council member appointed by the council president, and, uh, the mayor or a designee shall be a de facto member.
Mayor, exactly, all the resident members?
Um, and then there's all kinds of folks from different organizations.
Well, I don't think the mayor should be appointing everybody, it's, you know, I, I don't think it's right that the council only gets one person.
No, no, councilwoman, there, there is a list of, I, I think it may be thirty different organizations that will be representative as part of the steering committee, that's listed in the resolution, then there'll be one council person, and one person from the ma, that the mayor would designate, from, maybe from his staff, for example. But then there's a whole bunch of other organizations, various nonprofits, and state organizations, um, uh, state departments and whatnot that are, that are listed.
But I'm, I'm, but my, am I not asking the right question, but who determines who those people are, or going to be?
The organizations would select someone from their organization to be on it.
Correct.
The, the question that needs to be asked is, wha, who picked those organizations? What, which one of those organizations is tied in to the city of Trenton? Which one of those organizations has people that are members of the city of Trenton? That's the question that should be asked. You got a bunch of organizations...
And it says, and, and, and council president, I don't mean to interrupt, and, but it says working committee, so working committee means that, that's what it means, working committee, that means some, these are, there are, there's gonna be a set of members, and then, yes, there're gonna be peripheral people coming in from time to time, but on as needed basis, but who is gonna be part of the, how many working committee people it's gonna be, and who appoints them? Who's the working committee? What is the secret? Who's the working committee?
Should, but, councilwoman, would you like me to...
How many, how many people are gonna be on the working committee? Don't, I mean, if, if we're gonna have a working committee, I, working committee means that, that is a designated set of individuals that, that is there to deliver the initiative, right? And then, if we need to go out to different other departments, working committee needs to go out to different other departments or different other entities, then they'll bring them into the fold, but who is the working committee? I don't, I don't get what's so hard about...
Councilwoman, let me read...
The working committee is just Kathy McBride and the mayor?
Let me read, coun, councilwoman, if, if I may, let me, let me read it, right? So, the, the working committee's membership, would, and it's the aid, there's agencies, and it says usually the director or someone designated by the head of the organization. It'd be the Board of Education, Capital City Redevelopment Corporation, the Community College, the Department of Environmental Protection, Department of Transportation, Department of Treasury, New Jersey Transit, someone from the planning board, someone from Thomas Edison State University, the Downtown Association, and the Parking Authority. All right, and remember, these are all, this is in the downtown area, why you have a lot of state agencies...
Okay, all right, again, again.
And then, if I could continue, the citizen members...
Let Mr. Delisle...
But he's not understanding my question, either he's, or, I understand that these other organizations are gonna be sourced for information...
No, no.
But who is gonna be on the working committee? Who's gonna gather the information? Who's gonna be on the working committee, and who determines who, what individuals are gonna be on the working committee?
Those organizations would be members of the working committee, it would either be the head of those organizations, or someone that they designate from within their organization.
They can also appoint a citizen as a member.
No, 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 but somebody has to reach out to those heads up, those organizations, and say, come to the working committee group, we would like your input, we would like, we would like to have, we would like to have your expertise. I doubt if, you know, the head of Edison College is gonna be part of the working committee, right? He may be, be tasked for their expertise, but I, again, who is on the working committee? And who controls the working committee? And who chairs the working committee? Who goes out to these entities and call them to the table? That's what I'm asking. Oh, we, the council's supposed to blindly give the mayor that control, right? This is what this is, so I wanna know, who's the working committee?
If I could continue, councilwoman, there's the other members, citizen members, these would not be those agencies that you're, as you characterize them, someone from the African-American Chamber of Commerce, Ajax Management, Artworks, Capital City Community, Community, Clark Caden Hints, the First Presbyterian Church, Isles, the Latino Merchants Association, New Jersey Future, Orchard House, Trenton Health Team, the Society Friends, Turning Point Methodist, so these are all organizations that were identified that could be, and we've been invited to participate as part of the steering committee. Um, it would be the, the head of those organizations, again, or somebody designated by them, they would be convened, uh, they would be convened, councilwoman, if I could continue...
You just said steering committee, who's on the steering committee? No, Mr. Delisle, who's on the steering committee? Who's the steering committee? You said it, who's the steering committee?
I just read...
I mean, maybe, who's, who's the steering committee? You said it, Mr. Delisle, who's the steering committee?
Those, those organizations I just read off to you.
No, but who, who, who's gonna be trying to organize all of that? That's a, those are a lot, that's a lot of organizations.
Point of order, could I say something? There's a resolution attached to this, twenty-six-three-one, it looks like it was sponsored by Ms. Vaughn, the resolution to apply and accept professional planning services from the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs' Office of Local Planning Services, and it, and, and then the resolves, it says, "The city of Trenton establishes a working committee to assist LPS and authorizes the mayor or municipal designee with approval of city council to appoint members of the working committee and/or any replacement members necessary to retain functionality of the committee in the event of vacancies. The city of Trenton will provide access to appropriate municipal staff, consultants, and officials, meeting space, and other non-monetary resources that may be necessary to complete the project." And then there's a lot of other whereas's.
Well, uh, uh, council, like, I didn't, I did not introduce that ordinance, that's not mine, that's not my resolution, I don't, my name better be taken off of that, I did not say that the mayor...
And you, you said I, you, you voted for it.
No, I did not, I did not vote for the mayor to have...
I have it right, and you should have it, right, it's right on the back of, of the memo.
Twenty-one oh-three thirty-five, yes. But I don't remember voting the mayor to have unilateral authority to appoint members, I don't know, language change on these damn things?
You know what?
You know what? No, 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 again, well, I won't be voting for this if I don't get a clear understanding of who is on the steering committee and who will be working on it, and I don't understand why this council don't, don't want to have, want to give the mayor this unilateral authority to appoint anybody who he wants on these committees, on these committees, the plan for the entire city of Trenton.
Councilwoman, I'm, I'm not sure I understand...
Well, 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 let's change that language, it's never too late, it should say, in conjunction with the council.
Uh, councilwoman, this resolution is before the council for you to vote on this, so we, let, the list of organizations that I just...
I need, hey, I need to, uh, Mr. Delisle, I don't have any more questions for you, thank you very much, I need to review this, can we, uh, um, uh, roll call this, and I will review the language of this resolution, and I will make appropriate edits, if my council members would entertain that.
And I want you to also review twenty-dash-six-three-one, that was October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty.
And, and I remember then, I believe that's when the gentleman came to the meeting, and, 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 and with all due respect, council vice president Caldwell Wilson, I would have never voted for the mayor to have unilateral authority of appointing any committees in this city. So, that, that language was in, but the council, council vice president Caldwell Wilson, you interrupted me again.
The committee just reported to put the working committee together, this, this one that you, you approved, was to put the working committee together.
It, well, well, when I say...
I don't wanna talk about it anymore, let, you do your research.
Look, again...
Do your research.
I don't know, I don't know what that, I don't know what those clauses say, and I don't know who put those clauses in there, but there has been a lot of language changes after the council has voted. So all I'm saying to you now, we have an opportunity, Miss, Miss, Miss Caldwell Wilson, please, we have an opportunity now to make the change, okay? And I will be making those changes.
So, so, my, my, can I, can I, um, say something, if Ms. Vaughn is, uh, is coun, is councilwoman, is...
Yes, go ahead.
My, my question would be, for this resolution, who picked those organizations? Why would, why would we pick organizations that, to, to represent us, to make changes for the redevelopment area downtown, when in, in those organizations, none of the members are from the city of Trenton? And that's what I wanna talk about, I wanna talk about the organizations that are on the resolution. Um, Mr. Colin, could you just read off some, could you just read off some of the organizations that's on that resolution?
Yes, ma'am.
Just read them off, so I can hear them and, and make comment.
Uh, the working committee should be comprised of members appointed by the mayor or municipal designee with the approval of the city council, the membership may include agency members, one member usually a director or otherwise designated to the organization from one of the following organizations. The Board of Education for the Trenton Public Schools, the Capital City Redevelopment Corporation, the Mercer County Community College, the Mercer, Mercer County, the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, the New Jersey Department of Transportation, the New Jersey Department of Treasury, the New Jersey Transit, the Planning Board, city of Trenton, the Thomas Edison University, Trenton Downtown Association, Trenton Parking Authority, B, citizen members, and in the following organizations shall also be eligible for appointment as a citizen member, African-American Chamber of Commerce of New Jersey, uh, did you want me to continue, ma'am?
No, I just wanted to get a clear understanding of the organizations that being brought to the table, and then those organizations were going to select the, the committee. Now, my question is, okay, you've got the African-American Chamber of Commerce, you've got the Department of Transportation, you got the, uh, 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 the state, you have a bunch of organizations there, you got Ajax, and I'm just trying to, I was just trying to determine, um, the planning board, the people from the planning board are from Trenton, so I, I, I can live with that, but there's organizations on that list, and I'm just trying to determine, what connection do they have to Trenton? What do they, what do they bring, uh, to our community? Because the, the planning board is the, is the people that brings, uh, expertise part, the state, their, their guy is automatically in charge, so then I needed to know, um, who from the, uh, African-American Chamber of Commerce is gonna be selected? How will we determine that? They can select anybody, and they don't have to be Trentonians? Because you're giving the organizations the authority to put the people on the committee. So that's why I said that we need to, we, I think that we need to adjust the organizations that are going to select one of their members to be on that committee.
Uh, uh, council, uh, vice president Caldwell Wilson?
Yes, Ms. Vaughn.
Yes, um, I, I totally concur with the, uh, council president McBride on all of her comments, um, and I will further say that there are two developers on there, I believe Isles and, um, or nonprofit organizations, Isles and Ajax, and I don't understand how they got on there, to be honest. I mean, what's the criteria? Ajax is a developer, I would think that's a conflict of interest.
And so that's why I am saying that the, the organizations need to be thought out more clearly, I don't think that we need to be putting it up to vote when we didn't even have any input of who the organizations are, or, or going to be. So you're asking me to vote on organizations that I didn't select? It's, I don't think that we should be voting on a resolution to, um, agree with their selection of the organizations, I think that the council should have had input on who the organizations are. So I'm asking for this to be pulled, and let the council have some input on who the organizations will be.
Mr. Delisle?
Uh, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, my, I'm, I'm sorry, I thought it was on mute.
So, Mr. Delisle, would you be willing to pull this for further discussion, on these organizations?
I, I would like to move forward, because we wanna get the works, we can't start any of the work without it, I believe there's, there's language that, that people could add, added at other, at any other time.
No, 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 Mr. Delisle, Mr. Delisle, you either pull it, or I'll have a table, because we need to have some input on who these organizations is, councilwoman Vaughn brought up a good point about the developers being in conflict, so we need to pull it, you need to pull it, or we'll table it.
Okay, pull it.
Mr. Conlon, you can move on.
Yes, now we have Resolution twenty-one dash zero-three-six, this is from the Department of Public Works, Wahibonatieri Director, resolution authorizing a contract to Pete's Welding Company, Inc. for maintenance and repairs of heavy-duty vehicles, dump trucks, and sanitation trucks for various divisions in the Department of Public Works, the New Jersey State Contract Number T dash twenty-one oh-eight-eight-nine-two-eight-one, in an amount not to exceed fifty thousand dollars. Or is it? Would you like me to proceed, ma'am? Sent? Yes, ma'am. Next, we have resolutions to the Department of Water and Sewer, Mark Lavenberg, Director. First, we have resolution twenty-one dash zero three seven, resolution accepting a bid and awarding a contract to Petron Gold Contractors, Inc. for lead service, lead services replacement phase two C for the replacement of twelve hundred lead or galvanized steel lines for residences within Ewing Township and Lawrence Township from the water main to the water meter in the home in an amount not to exceed seven million eight hundred ninety-seven thousand, six hundred dollars through bid twenty-twenty dash eighty-four. Floor is open.
Any questions? Okay, consent?
Yes, ma'am. Next, we have resolution twenty-one dash zero three eight, resolution accepting a bid and awarding a contract to JCI Jones Chemical, Inc. for the furnishing and delivery of fifteen percent sodium hypochlorate. The solution is, this solution is used as a disinfecting agent in wastewater treatment for the sewer utility in an amount not to exceed ninety-nine thousand eight hundred forty dollars through bid twenty-twenty dash two eighty-seven. Floor is open.
Consent.
Yes, ma'am.
Whoa, 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 um, what, what's that now?
This is, uh.
Twenty-one oh three eight.
Oh, that's under, uh, Wally Onatieri, right?
No, this is under Mark Lavenberg, ma'am.
Oh, which one now? The twenty-seven, the twenty-one oh thirty-sevens?
No, twenty-three thirty-eight.
Did, did we table that? I mean, did we, uh, what are we doing with twenty-one oh thirty-seven? I'm sorry, I had to step away.
Twenty-one oh thirty-seven was moved to the consent agenda, ma'am.
Oh, no, 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 that cannot be moved to the consent agenda.
Which one is that?
The seven million eight nine seven? I don't even know what that is.
It's for the lead service line replacement phase two C to replace twelve hundred lead or galvanized steel lines for residences within Ewing Township and Lawrence Township from the water main to the water meter.
For seven point eight million dollars?
Yes, ma'am, seven.
So, is, is Mark Lavenberg, I mean, uh, council vice president Caldwell Wilson, can I speak?
Go ahead, councilwoman.
So, uh, where's Mark Lavenberg? Is he available?
Uh, present, councilwoman.
Okay, now, this is phase two C. So, um, Lawrence and Ewing, uh, they're grouped together. I thought Trenton was part of Lawrence, uh, Trenton was part of, uh, I thought Lawrence was with Hamilton Township and Ewing was with Trenton.
I don't believe that's the case, councilwoman.
But, but, but what is the case? Correct me.
This, this resolution here is for, uh, Ewing and Lawrence.
Okay, prior resolution with Spinello, right? They were doing, Trenton and Ewing, correct?
Uh, South State was doing Trenton and, no, South State has been doing Hamilton and Trenton. Trenton and Hamilton are linked together. They have their own contracts.
Okay, so, um, so you.
There are less, there are less replacements in Ewing and Lawrence. That's why we grouped them together in two C.
Okay, so one thousand two hundred lead lines, so they, so there were no work being done in Ewing and Lawrence under the Spinello or South State contracts?
No, no, there's been work going on in Ewing with the, uh, with Spinello contract.
That's what I thought.
South State's been working in Hamilton. And, and Spinello's been focusing most of their work in Trenton. There's not all that many connections in Ewing.
Okay, so, um, I know you've been given a report to us on the amount of lead lines that being replaced, uh, uh, I guess on a weekly or monthly basis you've been giving us, right?
I, I have, councilwoman, I'm just not sure if they're getting to you, um.
Well, no, no, I've gotten them. I just got a question for you on them. Uh, you're giving us numbers, and of course I've mentioned to you in the past that the project and the replacement is moving at a snail's spate, uh, pace, and you, and you shared that as a COVID and so forth and so forth. Um, and I always ask, are you meeting your targets? Because DEP had some targets for you at year end, and did we meet those targets as far as replacing the lead lines in these various municipalities, including Trenton?
We are, we are slightly behind our schedule with the state, but we are, as you know, pending litigation with the state.
Okay, okay. How many, how many lead lines are you behind?
Um, it would depend on which phase of the contract that we're in. We hope to make our, our, our numbers, uh, this spring and April and be caught up.
No, no, I'm asking you, based on what the state expected, I'm talking real numbers.
It's, it's, it's a very complicated question, and I, and I don't want to dance around the question. On some aspects of the contract, we are well ahead, and in others aspects,
Yeah, I'm talking about, uh, Mark, I'm talking about in aggregate, right? The state says at the end of December, you're supposed to have X number, you identified, I believe, twenty-six thousand lead lines to be replaced, right?
Correct.
Mm-hmm. So of that twenty-six thousand, where are we to date, Mark?
Three thousand.
So out of twenty-six thousand.
Twenty-six thousand or twenty-six hundred?
No.
Twenty-six thousand in total?
Yeah, in total. That's what you, that's what DEP is expecting, right?
The DEP is expecting twenty-seven hundred, uh, twenty-seven thousand.
That's what I'm saying, twenty-six thousand. Okay, so the number is twenty-seven thousand in total, right?
That's, that's the total number.
I understand that, Mark, but you're, you're, you're in a phase.
And we're not under obligation to.
So, so I'm asking, no, no, I know you're not obligated to deliver all the twenty-six. At the, at the end of December, how many were you, how many were, did the DEP ask you to deliver?
At the end of December?
Twenty.
We're not under a deadline for December. You're quoting a number of twenty-six thousand, which is the total number. We're required to get at least seven percent of those done, and we've gotten seven percent done. We are not on target to get to the fourteen percent number. Okay? And to get to the twenty-one percent number, we'll need to, uh, get the phase two, um, approved and under with these contracts.
Okay, all, all, all right, Mark. Um, I'm going to, uh, roll call this, and I'm going to look at your report again and compare it and go back to DEP's, uh, report as well. And I will be calling Mr. De Hope as well, um, the, 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 uh, council attorney, uh, for the water work. And one thing that you can do to enhance your report, Mark, going forward, that I haven't seen, by each, uh, contractor, Petron Gold, we got South State, we got, uh, uh, Spinello, and they all have, uh, seven-figure contracts, seven and eight-figure contracts, right? Can you, you still haven't given me a list of all the homes, the addresses of each one, uh, uh, of the addresses they actually replaced. You've just given me a number.
You be getting stuff your own self.
Hello, can somebody mute themselves, please? So, so, Mark, do you have a list of all the homes that were replaced to date?
Yes.
Okay, can you forward that to the council?
Um, let me see if I can get that approved, that that's public, that can be publicized, but if I can, I'd be more than happy to.
You can, it, it, I, I mean, uh, what, Mr. Bridges? Mr. Bridges? Mr. Bridges on the line?
Still here.
Okay, Mr. Bridges, can you contact the council's water law attorney, Mr. De Hope, and ask Mr. De, De Hope, is it okay? Is it legally acceptable for Mark Lavenberg, the water director, to release the addresses? Not, we don't have to have the people's name or social security number or anything, the addresses of the homes, uh, 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 sorted by municipality that had their lead lines replaced?
Be happy to, you want an Excel spreadsheet, Word document, what are you looking at?
Uh, whatever.
PDF?
Whatever we can get, whatever we can get, because it's hard to get stuff out of that water department. So whatever we can get, um, all the addresses.
Alphabetical?
By municipality. It would be, it would be, and it's, it would be, uh, since it's in numbers, it's going to be an address, so it's going to be in ascending or descending order. So, um, you know, the number, the, the actual addresses of all the homes to date that these multi-million dollar contractors have replaced.
I will follow up, Mr., uh, with their attorney about that for you, councilwoman Vaughn.
And it should, and it should reconcile back to the numbers that Mark has been reporting to council.
Ten-four.
Uh, councilwoman, with the, with the one exception, we are doing a lot in-house as well. It may not be reflected upon that with the contract work. We will certainly get you that information if we get the clearance from the law department to do that, but with the understanding that we are doing, we probably got a thousand of those in there ourselves. And I'm not changing these, as, as.
What do you, what do you mean in-house?
Mark, the Trenton Water Works is doing it.
Oh, you mean, you, oh, 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 okay, but.
We have crews out, we have crews out every day working on water lines. On, if it's on our side, we're working on it.
Okay, so that's, okay, I understand that. That's fine. But we want the numbers, the number, because you know why, Mark? Because we're paying multi-million dollar contracts, and you said, you, you told the council that this money is being used to replace lead lines. But we don't want to be paying them all the money, all this money if, uh, if our, uh, if our in-house, uh, technicians are, you know, running through this work.
Councilwoman.
Maybe we need to get rid of, maybe if our in-house technicians are faster than these very expensive contracts, maybe we need to rethink them.
That is, that is not the case, and.
Oh, I bet it is the case. I'm, I'm done, council vice president. Can we roll call this? Council vice president, can we roll call this?
Uh, councilwoman Vaughn, for the record, we do not work on a homeowner's side. We do not work.
Uh, Mr. Colin, may I, um, may I ask something to the council Caldwell Wilson? Vice Chair Caldwell Wilson?
I'm sorry, I was on mute. Go ahead.
Um, can I ask a question, uh, to Mr. Colin?
Yeah.
Mr. Colin, could you please, uh, pull up the actual minutes from, I believe it was two meetings ago or three meetings ago, where I asked Mr. Lavenberg to give us the actual number of Trentonians who had their lead lines replaced? Could you pull those minutes up for me so that I could get the date and the time that I've asked him the same question and for the same information that the councilwoman is asking him for tonight? That has been asked of him at least a month ago. Could you please pull those minutes up for me?
Uh, council president, those notes are in my office, and I will be happy to go through those notes, uh, when I return to the office tomorrow. Uh, but I have them available right now.
Thank you so much. So thank you, councilwoman, thank you, councilwoman Caldwell Wilson.
Okay. Mr. Conlon, you want to move on?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, just let me make one note. Next, we are still, uh, back to actually resolution twenty-one dash zero three eight. I'll read it again. Uh, resolution accepting a bid and awarding a contract to JCI Jones Chemical, Inc. for the furnishing and delivery of fifteen percent sodium hypochlorate. The solution is, is issued as a disinfecting agent in wastewater treatment for the sewer utility in an amount not to exceed ninety-nine thousand eight hundred and forty dollars through bid twenty-twenty dash eighty-seven. Floor is open. Would you like to proceed with consent agenda, ma'am?
Consent.
Yes, ma'am. Next, we have resolution twenty-one dash forty, a resolution accepting a bid and awarding a contract to Spinello Companies for Lead Service Replacement Phase Two B, Hamilton Township for approximately one thousand seventy-five addresses in an amount not to exceed eight million four hundred and sixty-two thousand three hundred and ten dollars through bid twenty-twenty dash eighty-two.
Uh, I have council president.
I have councilwoman.
Go ahead. Um, Mr. Lavenberg?
Yes, councilwoman.
Okay, so we issued, this is the third contract we're going with Spinello, correct?
That is correct.
Uh, we approved a seven point, I mean, seven million one hundred ninety-nine dollars and eight hundred dollars, seven million back in, uh, March nineteen twenty twenty. That was under David Smith. We gave Spinello seven point one million. What was that for? Well, it says, I mean, actually, I have it here. It says six, it said, uh, for lead service line replacement twenty twenty, on the utility side for the city of Trenton, Department of Water Works. So are they done with that project?
No, they are not done with that project.
They're not done with that project, and that's for seven million two hundred, I'm just rounding, seven million two hundred dollars.
When it's complete.
It says, it was for, uh, lead line, lead service line replacement project twenty twenty on the utility side.
Yep.
Then, we also, under Dr. Shea, in April nineteen, twenty nineteen, just a year or so earlier, we approved an eight million four hundred and thirty-three thousand contract with Spinello. And guess what that's for? That's for the lead service line replacement phase one B for Lawrence and Hamilton Township. And it says they were supposed to replace six hundred and fifty lead service lines before December thirty-first, twenty nineteen.
And I'm sorry, councilwoman, which one was that? That was under Sheen Fuchay?
Dr. Sheen Fuchay.
I believe that contractor was rejected.
That was rejected?
I believe so.
It, it was voted on unanimously. April eighteen, twenty nineteen, every single council member voted for it.
Right, that was the funding, there was delay in the funding, and we weren't eligible for the funding. We couldn't get the loan, we didn't proceed with the project.
So, so, okay, so that was for phase one B.
That's why we're here now on two, even though they're not done phase one, to be eligible.
Oh, wait a minute, wait, wait, whoa, whoa, whoa. Okay, so phase one B, but we, but we subsequently gave you the funding for phase one B, correct?
That's on our separate loan.
For, for Lawrence, for Lawrence and Hamilton Township.
That was a separate loan.
I'm, I'm, I, I don't care about, rather, with the separate loan. I'm, I don't, I'm not questioning you about the financing.
Good.
I want to know, have they delivered those six hundred and fifty, they complete that work?
Under phase one B?
Phase one B.
They have.
For six hundred and fifty, for six hundred and fifty lead service line, that's what it says, and they were post, they were supposed to do it by December thirty-first, twenty nineteen. Sub, sub, substantial completion date of the project is July first, twenty twenty, and the final completion date is July thirty-first, twenty twenty. So they should have been done with phase one B.
Phase, phase one B is, is through South State, not Spinello?
Oh, I'm sorry, you, you're right. Okay, I'm sorry. Uh, one, one second. I, I opened the wrong file.
Would you like an update on one B?
No, 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 no.
You'd like to count that?
Wait a minute, Spinello, yeah, absolutely. Spinello, seven million two hundred, right? Uh, that was March twenty twenty under David Smith. There was another Spinello contract, oh, boy, on, uh, under Stephen Pico. This was on December fifth, twenty nineteen, under Stephen Pico, and you're saying, and this was for, for lead line replacement phase one A and phase one A dash two. So, uh, and that was, that was in December twenty nineteen, under Pico. And let me see that the council approved. Yeah, we approved unanimously.
Is there a question, is there a question? Is there a question, is there a question there?
No, I mean, I mean.
And so Spinello under Steve Pico started in July of twenty twenty, July.
Okay, so that's less than a year ago.
They're not complete, they're not complete yet.
Okay, so, so what I'm saying is to you, so now that was for phase one A and phase one A dash two. So that's for phase one A, so phase one A should be done then, right? Unless there's a phase one A dash three, is that the case? You haven't said that.
No.
So, uh.
So they started one A in July, they've got two hundred and sixty-four done so far on one A.
And then the one in twenty twenty, March twenty twenty, under David Smith, we gave him another seven million dollar contract.
That's one B?
It doesn't even say, it just says on the utility side, remember I said, uh, that's lead service line project twenty twenty, utility side. So we gave Spinello a seven point two, two million contract, March twenty twenty. And then we gave Spinello, uh, a, 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 a contract at the end of December, December twenty nineteen, six months earlier.
Okay, so out of twelve hundred and fifty services for that contract, they've gotten seven hundred and fifty-two done.
And we gave them almost sixteen million dollars.
And they started, we haven't given them anything until the work's done.
No, but they've been drawing down, right, sixteen million. So now, so we gave them, uh, seven million and, uh, eight, eight point eight million in December nineteen, March twenty twenty, about six months later, we, uh, less than six months later, three months later, we gave them another, uh, seven million dollar contract. And now we're about to give them another, uh, today, you're on the docket for, how many? How much money? I gotta, I, my screen is too small, uh. Is Spinello up for a contract again?
That is correct.
Oh my God.
Another seven million.
How many, how much?
I think it's another seven million.
Another seven million, sir. And so they're not done with phase one A, they're not done with, they're not done with the utility side of the lead service line, what is the utility side, is that under phase one A or phase one B?
Utility side's a standalone contract? It's a standalone contract, I don't, I don't know why it's funny, but.
With the same company, okay, so, but those were lead service lines though.
It's a completely different, it's a completely different service, it doesn't involve going into a person's home.
Okay, so that's on the utility side, so they took, so they're not done with that yet.
Nope.
Okay. All right, sir, at the end of the day, and you just, uh, give us this report of all the homes that Spinello has done on the, I mean, the work that they're doing on the utility side, how many pipes they replaced on the utility side, and how many pipes they were, how many residential homes they have, um, completed to date. So, and so in total, uh, we're looking at, uh, we gave Spinello nine, seven, sixteen, and we're giving them another seven, so twenty-six million, uh, twenty-six million dollars?
I would have to pull together all the contracts for that.
Twenty-six mil. Um, and I can't, I want to see how much they got done to date and how much we're, that we've already paid down. How much they invoiced us to date, do you have that too, Mark?
That's not a problem.
Do you have how much they invoiced to date?
I do, I could give you that, it is a long form, since it came from my budget officer, I'd be more than happy to send it to you via email tomorrow.
Okay, and, uh, Mr. Bridges?
There it is, how are you?
Is he on the line?
I'm still on the line, Ms. Vaughn.
Okay, so the, all these multimillion dollar contracts, I, I believe you know what the expectation is. I don't want to have to go into it tonight, but.
We, I'm happy to continue our long in-depth, drawn-out, weekly conversations about it. I'm happy to do that when you're ready to talk about it.
Well, we want, well, a contractor that has twenty-six million dollars in contracts for the city, a value in contracts, uh, needs to be absolutely compliant with the law in every respect, right, you do agree?
Would you like to discuss that now, would you like to discuss that?
We cannot discuss it now, you know that, right?
Uh, I, I do not know that, we've discussed it in the past, but I'm happy to discuss it now.
Yes.
Okay, uh, you don't want to go off topic.
Um, that's fine, not off topic, it was on topic last meeting, but we could have it off topic this meeting, you and I talk after the meeting.
Okay, I need you both to, okay. Are you finished, Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, um, roll call that, please.
Yes ma'am.
So, so I have a question, Councilwoman Caldwell.
Go ahead, go ahead, Councilwoman.
So if we, if the homeowners were paying a thousand dollars per home and the city was doing the, um, uh, the difference, can, can Mr. Lavenburg tell me how much a lead line replacement costs per house? Because the city was offsetting with costs, but the homeowner had to pay a thousand dollars. So I'm trying to gauge how much, how many homes should have been done for, for the nineteen million that they already have. So if, if we, if the homeowner's paid a thousand, and what did the city offset? And how many homes should have been done under that nineteen million? So they can keep saying, oh, that's on the electric side. How many homes were supposed to be done for the nineteen million dollars? So if somebody can get an answer, it's Lavenburg, Lavenburg.
I'd really be happy to answer that question, like, right away. Um, because, you know, water service is a, is a pretty much a commodity, you know, going, you know, that's pretty easy. So the, the short answer is about eight thousand dollars, and that's the average. It all depends on if the road's on a county road, of course, a city road, and then what's, what's, what it costs to fill it back in. But eight thousand dollars is, is an average number, okay? Of which, um, we are being, we ask the resident to, you know, kick in a thousand dollars towards the cost of the eight thousand dollars. So that means in most, most cases, where the city is putting up seven thousand dollars. But it's really, really important to understand that with phase one and phase two is that the, the, the DEP and NJIB has been, you know, bending over backwards to give us the best deal that they can on that loan, so that half of it is forgiven. So of that seven thousand dollars that we're being asked to, to kick in to change over our homeowner's lead service line, um, the city would be on the hook for thirty-five hundred of that seven thousand.
Okay.
Okay, and then we do the math, if we divide, if we divide, you know, the, the number, whether it's twenty-five million in phase two or the fifteen million dollars in phase one, you know, divide that by eight thousand, that's an approximate number of what you get. Um, when we talk about things like utility side, um, that's a much less expensive operation. So with one of our contractors, uh, that was doing the utility side contracts, we got very lucky. Uh, the cost was really minimal when it came to it, so that project was able to get completed ahead of time and under budget. And then therefore we have the ability to actually get more services done, uh, at the same time. So I, I appreciate that question.
Um, thank, thank you.
Mr. Collin?
Yes ma'am, next we have, uh, twenty-one dash zero four zero has been roll called. Next is twenty-one dash zero four one, a resolution authorizing contract award to Jet Vacuum Equipment LLC for the purchase of a new water jet that provides a truck-mounted high-pressure sewer cleaner for the city of Trenton Division of Sewer Utility in an amount not to exceed two hundred and fifty-six thousand two hundred and thirty-two dollars and eighty-one cents.
Any questions?
Yes, I have a question that.
Yes, again, Mr. Rodriguez.
Yeah, just, just, just that equipment or that for the truck and everything?
Uh, that, that is a complete unit, that is the truck and the jetting equipment. Um, and I appreciate the question because, um, I actually operated the same vehicle uh, for about five years, um, about a decade or so ago. Uh, and I appreciate, uh, the sewer utility, um, selecting this type of vehicle versus the much more expensive and larger jet vacs that are, that are out there. Uh, they're very commercial, especially in an urban environment. Um, and, you know, the, the way that truck is built, it's very maneuverable uh, in tight spots and narrow streets and, uh, it, it's a good vehicle. They, they have one now that's, uh, you know, made its life expectancy. But this is a, is a good unit and you get a lot of years of service out of it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Consent?
Yes ma'am. Next, we have Resolution twenty-one dash zero four two, a resolution authorizing contract with VMG Group to provide roof repairs for the Trenton Sewer Utilities Digestor Building to deteriorated roof that can no longer be patched, awarded through the County of Mercer Cooperative Contract and Purchasing System Agreement, CK zero nine Mercer twenty twenty dash zero eight B, in an amount not to exceed one hundred and thirty-seven thousand eighteen dollars. Floor is open. I would like to proceed, ma'am, consent?
Consent.
Yes ma'am. Next, we have Resolution twenty-one dash zero four three, resolution authorizing an additional three-month contract extension to Source Link to continue to provide printing and mailing services for regular final and corrected billing for division of water billing in an amount not to exceed thirty-eight thousand six hundred and seventeen dollars and nine cents.
I have a question on this, um, Mr. Cruz, did another RFP go out on this?
Uh, um, Council Vice President, um, that answer could be probably best, uh, answered by the director.
Mr. Lavenburg?
Yes, Council Vice President, um, yes, we did put out another RFP and we had the bid opening, uh, last week and we should be ready to award this week.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Yes ma'am. Next, we have Resolution twenty-one dash zero four four, a resolution accepting a bid and awarding a contract to JAS Group Enterprise, Inc. For lead services replacement phase two A for the replacement of twelve hundred lead or galvanized steel lines for residences within the city of Trenton from the water main to the water meter in the house in an amount not to exceed seven million nine hundred and seven thousand three hundred and eighty dollars through bid twenty twenty dash eighty-one.
Uh, um, Council President, Council Vice President?
Go ahead, Ms. Vaughn.
Uh, wait a minute, um, wait a minute, my computer, don't fail me now here, uh, Jazz, JAS Group for, uh, seven, so phase two A within the city of Trenton. Phase two B. Wait a minute now, uh, we're gonna have to roll call this one.
Yes ma'am.
Okay, uh, because it seems like there's some duplication or overlap here with these contracts. Uh, Mr. Lavenburg?
Yes, Councilwoman.
Um, so that's for two B, one B, uh, Spinello's doing one B for, uh, eight point four million, right?
Correct, South State is one B, again, my apologies.
But this one is for two B.
Hey, good. This is for two A?
No, Jazz, wait a minute, Jazz says.
Who's Jazz? I don't see Jazz.
Jazz Group, the, the resolution that is on the docket for tonight, twenty-one zero four four.
Should be two A?
Two A.
Yes.
And that's for the replacement of twelve hundred lead or galvanized steel, oh, so lead or galvanized steel lines for residents within the city of, replacement of, okay, for two A. And that's seven million, that's twelve hundred at seven point nine million.
Yes.
And that's Trenton.
Yes.
But Spinello is doing Trenton too. On the, uh, they're doing phase one A and one, that was on, uh, one eight, uh, was it? One A and two A. The Spinello contract was covering Trenton, the eight point eight seven million, so this, this is a duplicate.
No, this is Hamilton, Spinello.
No, 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 the, the, the contract back in, the eight million eight hundred and seven, eight, eight million eight hundred and eight seven, eight million eight hundred eighty-seven thousand for one thousand and seventy-five lines in Trenton and Ewing. Phase one A and phase, uh, one A two. One A two. So why are we, why is this company coming in doing phase two A? The city of Trenton? And, and that was already done under a previous contract?
Why are they coming in to do it, is that, that's the question? And, and you think it's duplicate?
Uh, again, we've already, it looks like this is redundant, a duplicate.
We, we have twenty-seven thousand lead services throughout the system. We're never, we're never getting to twenty-seven thousand, we're talking twelve hundred.
No, no, Mark, Mark, I'm making it simple, Mark. Twenty-one zero four four says, uh, this is for phase two A for the replacement of one, one hundred, two hundred lead line services in the city of Trenton.
Right.
If you go back to the previous Spinello contracts, you, you, uh, that call for one thousand and seventy-five lead line replacement across Trenton and Ewing. That was going to be phase one A and one two A.
Correct.
So, it appears to be redundant here.
I, I don't understand the redundancy.
So Trenton, so, so I guess, all right, so, again.
We're just working around the edges here, just trying to get whoever can get signed up as, as fast as they can.
No, 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 no. This contract, you say is for the city of Trenton, whereas you already assigned Trenton to Spinello. And they're being paid eight million, eight point eight million. So the city of Trenton has one hundred and two, one thousand two hundred on the Jazz Group contract. It's gonna have a portion of, uh, the one thousand seventy-five on the Spinello contract. Because Spinello and Jazz is working to replace lead lines in Trenton.
Correct. There's, there's tens, there's tens of thousands of, of services that need to be replaced. We're only talking twelve hundred in this particular contract or, or one thousand and seventy-five in the other contract.
I know, but I remember when these contracts were first introduced and it was told to us, this council, and everybody on this council should remember, that when the assessment was done, Spinello was supposed to do Trenton and Ewing. And I remember that because we made a big deal out of Trenton and Ewing going first over Hamilton and Lawrence, because Trenton is the owner of the water works. So now you come to us and say, oh, we undercounted, so Trenton needs an additional twelve hundred lead line? Now we, no, no, you weren't here at the time, Mark.
I don't, I don't think there's any undercounting at all, there's over ten thousand lead services in the city of Trenton itself.
Okay, all right, all right, um, all right, I, I, I'm gonna reconcile your numbers, uh, again. I was told, I was under the impression that, that Spinello was gonna do Trenton and Ewing and how, and, uh, and, um, and, uh, and South State is gonna do Lawrence and Hamilton. and how, and, and South State was gonna do Lawrence and Hamilton. Now, where does other new group coming in with their handout for a contract, and coming in on Trenton? I don't, and no one ever told us that there was gonna be another contractor here covering Trenton only. So I don't, I don't understand, I don't understand the planning here at Trenton Water Works around the lead service replacement line. Doesn't seem like they have a plan. Seems like the numbers move every day, and then you go out and give a multimillion-dollar contract willy-nilly to whomever. I don't think I know how many lead lines is in the city of Trenton, or even in the service areas that have to be replaced.
Madam President, if I may, Adam Cruz, Business Administrator.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Cruz.
Yeah, I just want to speak to the, to the procurement. Councilwoman Robin Vaughn is correct that the contract, the previous contract was awarded for two different townships. However, in the next round of bids, this contractor won, this other contractor won the bid to perform the work in Trenton. So it's not that we are selecting the vendor to give them a specific townships. It's just how the bids came out. Spinello was the lowest bidder for a certain town, and the other company was the low bidder for another town. So it's not that the city is choosing, or Mark, or Water Works is choosing the vendor. It's just how the procurement process, you know, ended up being. That is all.
Can we, can we, what do you call it?
Roll call.
Yeah, roll call it, please.
It's been listed for roll call, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Connell, move on.
We will have one ordinance for introduction and public hearing. It is 21-4, an ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 14 of the Code of the City of Trenton Traffic. No parking for snow plowing, as it applies to General Green Avenue and Lyndale Avenue. Floor is open for questions.
Madam President, or Vice President?
Yes, Counsel.
I had a message, well, I saw it early this morning. I believe that Councilman Harrison was called at midnight, 12, after 12 last night, because the police was calling people out from a Roblin, Roblin Avenue, telling them that if they didn't move their vehicles, they were gonna be towed. My car, I finally got it out of the snow today, and I live a block away from Roblin, you know. It wasn't, I wasn't affected by that, because I believe that Roblin is considered an emergency route. I don't know why, but that's what they have in the, the place. Now, I see that they are adding more, more emergency areas in Trenton. That's what it is. Making it more difficult for our residents. Getting more customers to that, to the towing companies that Councilman Blackley have been complaining about, so that our residents have to go and pay, what, 175 plus a hundred each day after that, or whatever. Because that's what they've been doing. If it wasn't for Councilman Harrison last night, that he took, they were gonna, they were gonna tow a lot of vehicles from an area where, right now in Trenton, where are people gonna park their cars? They said the schools, yeah, there's only one school there, Washington School, with a very small parking there. But Roblin, there's a lot of residents in Roblin. Goes all the way to Broad Street. So what is this? Where are these people from General Green? And I'm very familiar with General Green. I used to hang around there when I was a teenager. And that's a, that's a small street, I think it's two blocks, blocks. Where are they going to park their cars? On Cowwater School? That's about 10 minutes away from them. That's a close school there. Where are they gonna park? They have to go all the way to Trenton High? There's no schools in this neighborhood. I mean, it's here. It's my neighborhood. There's no schools in here. That's where our kids go, and way out to South, South Trenton, or Trenton High. But do you expect senior citizens from way out Liberty Street to take their cars to Trenton High or to Heskey Williams if there is parking there? And how are they gonna get back? How are they, then the next day, I got, I got the robot courses. You have to be moved, your car before 9:30 at night, and you have to, they were asking people this morning, they have to be out of those parking, the schools parking lots by 12:30, otherwise they were gonna be towed away. You know, what is this that we don't understand? Why we have, we have to punish our residents? Right? Because to me, that's a punishment.
We have to punish.
People. I will devote a note to this, to this ordinance, but I, I don't know. This is crazy. We should get rid of some of these so-called emergency routes.
Mr. Anatarri, can you explain where these people are gonna park?
Madam Vice President, unfortunately, Mr. Anatarri has been working almost 24 hours a day for the last four days, and he was unable to make it to this meeting. We have had discussions, Madam Vice President, and to Councilmen, to the council members, and perhaps public concern. We have had internal conversations where we will have a debriefing as to how operations, when would police, Wally, the mayor, and everybody else involve, so that we can, if we need to work on adjusting routes, or perhaps alternate parking through these emergencies, we can perhaps come up with a more functional plan for the residents. So that has, that is actually on the table, and we will be discussing that in the very near future. Hopefully, we will have an answer before the next snowstorm hits us.
So, Mr. Cruz, you know, I mean, even a suggestion, if residents are mandated to move their cars, if the city could put on a bus to meet them at where they're supposed to park and take them home?
We will have, we will include that. It's a good suggestion. We will have, we will put that on the table as well, Madam Vice President.
Counsel Vice President?
Go ahead, Counsel.
Yeah, just to let everybody know, no cars on Roblin got towed last night. Was able to talk to the residents, was able to talk to the police. No cars got towed. This morning, Wally Garland, they came out there, they got Roblin Avenue plowed. Me and other neighbors helped dig out some of the seniors who were having a harder time getting their vehicles out. So at the end of the day, it was all teams working together. Tribe Police, city, like I said, Wally, Garland, and the neighbors. So at the end of the day, you know, we end up working together and getting it taken care of. So kudos to the neighbors on Roblin. All came out and stepped up and helped numerous seniors on Roblin Avenue. So it was greatly appreciated. So thank you to Mr. Smith, and I say, he was out there, out there walking up and down the street helping. So it's greatly appreciated that everybody in the community worked together and got the cars out, got the street plowed, and moved on, and got the cars back in front of their houses. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel Call. Counsel Vice President?
Yes, go ahead.
The, the problem seems to be that, for some reason or other, no one is recognizing that they should include the council in their emergency meetings, that the council should be included, because we know the streets, we know the residents, and we understand the situation, because we're hands-on. And so when you have a storm coming, when you have a flood coming, and you don't have, we don't use the emergency center that we have on Perry Street to convene emergency meetings to talk about issues like this, then you're gonna run into problems. Because the, the, in 2014, in 2013, when I was on the council, they used to call emergency meetings, and the council and all of the emergency staff had to come into the control center on Perry Street, and then they would, we would walk through the process and how things were to be handled. But for some reason or another, this administration has people that aren't even affiliated with the council posting on their Facebook page what, what the information that the council should have. And we're not called to talk about the garbage pickup, what will tell our residents, what's the date that has been rescheduled? What is the, what is the protocol if you do live on a road where it has signs for you to have signs that said you must move when the road is covered with snow? Most of the signs are gone. And instead of us having these conversations, we're all reacting to a situation where we should have been proactive and had a plan, and the council should have known the plan and helped roll the plan out. But the way this thing is going here, you got a stop clerk making decisions. You've got a person that's not even on the council posting up on their Facebook. I've never seen anything like it before, ever. And so in order for us to work together, we need to know what the plan is, and we need to be a part of the plan. And that, I'm saying this directly to the administration, because we should have been called.
Counsel President, may...
There should have been a plan rolled out for this council to relate to their constituents. And that's the way it used to be. This year, no way of doing business. I don't, I don't get it.
Counsel President, may I be heard in that regard? I agree with your sentiment and with your consent. And again, I hope I'm not speaking out of turn with respect to administration, but I would like to work with you in that regard, because I absolutely agree that council needs to be involved with those meetings, obviously, to be able to get the word out what's going on. So again, as part of the administration, I'll speak with you and you delegate that you would like me also to speak with to work out that line of communication.
Thank you.
Counsel Vice President?
Yes, Mr. Harrison.
I also like to say that Wally and Garland, we need to really think about the equipment. I see in the equipment that we have out there today, and we need to really consider that we need to replace equipment. We need equipment replaced. When I look at it, and it's, my eyes were shaking. I couldn't believe it. But as I said, at the end of the day, we have to upgrade the equipment, so that our city workers, who are out there working hard, and they were out there working hard, plowing as many streets as they could, and that's greatly appreciated. But we need to upgrade the equipment, so that it makes the job that they're doing, doesn't make it so that they have to keep coming two, three times on the street, because the equipment is not up to par. So like I said, I think we need to really look at that equipment that they need, that they needed to do the job right. Thank you.
Thank you. And I ask everybody that we're on this ordinance, so I'm assuming you want that roll called, Mr. Rodriguez?
It's an ordinance, ma'am. It'll be roll called by law.
It will be, that's right. You're right. Okay. You can move on, Mr. Connell.
Okay, that actually does it for the docket. We will now move, with your permission, ma'am, to the public portion. This is public portion for...
Before we move to public portion, Counsel Vice President, can I ask one question about the order?
Go ahead.
It'll be quick. Mark Levinberg, I just want to thank you, because you did send over a very in-depth revenue report to the council. Are you, is Mark still on the line? Is Mark Levinberg still on the line?
Mr. Levinberg?
I don't see Mr. Levinberg, ma'am.
Okay. All right, so the Business Administrator on the line?
Yes, I am on.
Yes. Mr. Levinberg sent over to the council the revenue report, and I would assume that you will be filing that revenue report with BPU shortly for the year 2020. It's due, I believe, at the end of first quarter each year, or, I know, actually, it's due by end of January, I believe. Have we submitted that, Mr. Cruz, the BPU revenue report for Trenton Water Works?
Well, so not really closes at the end of the year, as you all know. It gets, it gets completed, and then, yes, it is submitted to BPU. I will have to check with the Department of Finance if that report has already been sent to BPU. Would you like to be informed when it does, Councilwoman?
Well, we would like a copy.
Okay.
And we like, and we would like Mark to review it with us, because that was, I looked at his numbers that he sent to us in a spreadsheet, and they look kind of off to me. You know, and that's why I wanted to ask him some questions about it. And I'll just say that he did a comparison of total revenues from the prior year and this year, I mean, 2020, right, in 2019.
Councilwoman, we're off docket, and we have the public waiting to speak.
Okay, no problem. Thank you. I'll follow up. Thanks.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is the public portion. This is for items on the docket only. You are limited to 10 minutes. Vice President, we have Mr. Algenon Ward, who would like to speak.
Go ahead, Algenon.
Mr. Ward, you have been recognized, sir.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Algenon Ward. First, I'd like to wish you all a happy Black History Month. And it is so appropriate that we be discussing how to properly acknowledge our ancestors that are buried in the Locust Hill Cemetery. At this juncture, I'm not sure if I should give you a history of the cemetery or a history of the project. Please, 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 give a history of the burial. I thought I heard both answers, so I'll be brief.
Who was that speaking?
But if you could please let Algenon speak, please. Thank you. I would like to speak after. Thank you.
Okay.
Go ahead, Algenon.
A thumbnail view of it, of the cemetery itself. There are actually 21 cemeteries incorporated in the city of Trenton, all but three are now remaining. Of those 21, there were several places where...
Algenon, I have to tell you, the cemetery's not on the docket. We were talking about the museum.
Okay, I'll bring you up, I'll refer to the museum. But in order to do this, Councilwoman, I must first acknowledge that for decades, the Locust Hill community, through the East Trenton Center, now the East Trenton Collaborative, have had the Locust Hill Cemetery restoration on their radar. And many, many people have had this before, the city fathers and mothers as something that needed to be done. And as this project has moved forward, those people who have for decades, Ethel Wilkins comes to mind right away as a person who has been championing this effort the whole time. In fact, her family lived in the building, number 73 Hard Avenue, and her daughter Lisa Toro grew up in that building, and they always shepherded the restoration of the cemetery. I have to also acknowledge that the people in the neighborhood, many of them who are Ochiganarians, who lived their entire lives on Hard Avenue and Oak Street... Who lived their entire lives on Hart Avenue and Oak Street have always um held. Uh a place in their heart to make sure that this uh project went forward. Uh I want to mention the children of the Garvey School. And uh Councilwoman uh Caldwell Wilson was out there with uh rakes and uh bags and picking up garbage uh for that place. Uh Baye Kemet um had, had long been advocating for this. Um Kim Booker, uh so the Greer family, uh so many other people in the East Trenton neighborhood have been working diligently. To see uh that this is properly um commemorated. And the idea of this is not, not simply to restore graveyard, but be the centerpiece of redevelopment. Uh for the entire Locust Hill area as part of the Acid Pink Greenway Project. Um we're working closely with the DEP so that we can uh do uh environmental mitigation or remediation. Uh at the rear of the property where the butts against the creek. Now, when it comes to the uh house that we hope to make it um into a mini museum and office for the Sixth Regiment. United States Color Troops, we think this uh, uh, a win-win situation in that we'll have a presence there to make sure. That the uh area is maintained and that uh when we have visitors, we can greet them. That we can have the building available for the residents to use. And that we can maintain the collection of artifacts that we um will gather related to the cemetery. As well as do um research on the people that are interred there. And uh the United States Color Troops that are, are properly recognized there. We contemplate a memorial for the um color troops as well as for the civilians there. Um as far as the building is concerned, we, we want to, well, I guess let me start at the beginning. We have uh successfully applied for and got a planning grant for the National uh Council, New Jersey Council for the Humanities. Which allowed us to do the planning for, for this project. However, what, where we are right now is that we um are applying to the New Jersey Council of the Humanities. For the implementation grant and that will be about twenty thousand dollars. So that we can do the preliminary architecture and site design so that we could. Answer specifically about um what it's going to cost to bring the whole uh project together. We estimate that the uh, the final cost of the project will come between two hundred and fifty to half a million dollars depending on. Um what we do there and what problems we may find. Uh how we're going to fund that is that we have um. Submitted a, a preliminary um proposal uh before the New Jersey uh Historic Commission. Uh Historic Grant Fund, they have indicated at the workshop we attended. That this would be uh something that would probably qualify. So we're at that, that stage now that we can begin to do any, the nuts and bolts administrative work. To get the project off the ground and started. But I want to caution the council that we have to s- submit a letter of intent by March the first. So we do not have a lot of time to um delay in moving forward with this. Hopefully um we'll dispense with the uh agreement between the city and the Sixth Regiment, conditional agreement. So that we can move forward and make application for the implementation grant. So that we can get the architects in there and the build, uh builders in there so that we can have specific numbers. About just what the costs are going to be. We, we're not able to provide you that right now because of course that wasn't, it's not our property and we can't go in there and do anything. Until, until we have a good um, a site control. Now, um. Uh we have uh engaged Dr. Dr. Linda Caldwell Eppsman, Sankopa Collaborative. She's designed a programming, uh education, programming um outline. That's also supplied in our uh grant. And uh we've engaged historical architects, Mr. Damon Tavarianis and Clark Caden Heinz. Uh as, as architects uh on, on the project at this point. They've agreed to make sure we have included um African Americans on their design team so that. Um we have uh buy-in from the entire community. Uh the people of the neighborhood, um we wanted to be sure that they had input. We held six meetings, four of our design, uh, uh, our project management team. And two community meetings so we could get the input from the people of the Locust Hill neighborhood. I personally went door to door throughout Hart Avenue, Oak Street, North Clinton Avenue, Hurley Street. Put surveys in everyone's mailbox uh with a proposal, a design plan. As well as a survey to solicit their input and a stamp envelope so they could send it back. And we gathered um all of the uh surveys, one hundred percent of them were in favor of, of doing this project. And in fact, they were quite anxious to see it get done. Uh they attended a chat and chew meeting where we went over the entire scheme. Um their input was that we make sure we included the neighborhood youth in it. And uh that um any work be done will be focused uh, 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 Trenton residents. As, as the people who would uh be the caretakers of, of, uh, of the property. We envisioned a Serenity Garden, uh shout out to Minnie Sababu. We wouldn't duplicate that effort um that she started. Uh we want to include something like that here um so that the community can take part in the beautification of that area. And uh we also envisioned an amphitheater along the um path of the Acid Pink Creek. Where the drill teams can uh practice marching, where we could have uh concerts in the summer. Uh just an open space that's available to the people in the community. We also envisioned um lighting along the path uh to be powered um by the powerhouse, which is another topic I'll bring up at another time. But we want to make this as environmentally friendly uh as possible. In fact, it'd be a point of mitigation to help to clean up the Acid Pink Creek, which is right now uh heavily polluted. At the museum itself, we're going to restore it to as close to uh original as we can get it. Um there are some elements that won't probably be exactly the same, but uh we do have an early picture of it. Um so we can bring it back to uh its original design. And with the help of Ms. Ethel Wilkins, who actually lived in the house, we can probably get very close to what was there originally. There's over uh a hundred people uh interred there and at least uh ten uh United States Color Troops. We have most of their names, there's a few that's missing, but that's part of our research. We're going to find uh all the names that are buried there and, and uh make sure they're properly commemorated. But I want to emphasize once again that this is a, a community-wide effort. I thank all of y'all in council who've given me accolades, but uh I'm, there's a whole team behind me. You did, the quarterback don't win the Super Bowl by himself. He, he can't do it without an entire team. And um I'm just here, it's an honor for me to represent the interests uh of the people of the Locust Hill neighborhood. But they're the ones who deserve the um, any recognition. Um I'm just the point man and uh again, it's an honor for me to do it. Uh I know all of you appreciate the need for us to um acknowledge our ancestors. And in doing so, we can teach the next generation about the history of, of our beloved Trenton and uh.
Thirty seconds.
Oh, okay. And, and who the people are who came before them so that they can instill a sense of pride in um who they are and where they live. And uh this is exactly the kind of project that can um serve to bring that kind of thing to life. The Un- the United States Color Troops will be on scene. And uh and in that way, we can assure that this, this will be an ongoing uh asset uh to the Locust Hill community. And center for uh development of that entire area. So thank you for your time, we appreciate all of the expressions of support and may God bless you all.
Thank you, Algenon.
Uh next we have Darren.
Council Vice President?
Yes, all, all. Vice President, my chief vice president.
Yes, yes, Councilman.
Yeah, could I put a motion on the floor to temporarily suspend the roles to let Algenon talk about the history of the cemetery? Because I think it's very important. I think, I think we should allow him the, the opportunity to talk about the history of the cemetery. I think that's.
The problem is that we do have other people waiting and if he wants to wait till they get to speak and come back and talk about it.
Well, I, I think it's very important, yeah.
Whatever the council prefers, I think it would be fair to let other people speak and I'll be glad to speak at the end if you need me.
Thank you, Algenon.
Yep, thank you, everybody.
Uh we have Darren.
Vice President, my chief vice president.
Sir, I have you on the queue, uh but I have Mr. Green first, sir. Uh Council Vice President, Mr. Darren Green. Mr. Green, please, please.
Go ahead, Mr. Green.
Good evening, Council Vice President and Council members, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you for the opportunity to speak, I like to get right to the point, three quick points in regards to uh the new turf at the high school. It is absolutely essential that this council supports that initiative. Uh when we talk about what's going on at the new high school, the field that is there. You heard the young King Jair Brown speak eloquently about what they had to go through and deal with. Not just internally at the high school there, but it's the psychological reality of going to other high schools and seeing them have state of the art. But come home and not even be able to practice on their own field. It's absolutely essential that we begin to teach and invest in our babies, showing them that they are the best of the best as well. They should not have to go other places to see state of the art. And it's also going to be interesting tonight to see how many elected officials speak to this issue now. When the new high school opened, there were a million elected officials flocking to the new high school to take photo ops to be a part of that scenario. But it's interesting now when this work still continues on, needs to be done. I want to see how many elected officials are here to do a part of this work. The old field really represents an extension of the old high school. And if we're honest about it, we sent our babies into a condemned building. Rats, roaches, mold, asbestos, mildew, poor ventilation. So if we're sent them into that and we're still now sending our young men onto that field, what message are we sending? At what point do we decide to say to them, we're going to give you the best so that you can have an opportunity to produce your best? It's absolutely insane, I think it's disrespectful and offensive to always give them the worst of the worst, but always expect the best of them to them. Secondly, I think it's important for council to understand this should be a step in the process. I do graduations process, uh serve the services for most of the middle schools. And in those schools, the cafeteria or the auditorium or gymnasium is oftentimes over a hundred degrees when we go into those buildings. So when you send a message tonight that you're investing in this school, you should go further and start moving in the direction of investing in the schools, period. We don't say it enough, but the number one institution in this city is not the Economic Development Department. It's not the Water Department, it's not even inspections, the number one institution in this city is our school system. And as long as we keep sending the wrong message about the right thing, we will create and co- uh create a culture. Where our babies who go there, the parents who support there, the administrators who work there, will think it's okay for us not to show up each day and be excellent. We as council members, we as community advocates, need to send that message that our school system is our number one institution and we're going to support it. Last but not least, you send a message as council members on your value system. The budget dictates what we value. So if we value our schools, we value education, we value empowering young people who are in our right now, but will be the adults who. Who sit and live and work and operate in the communities inside of this city, shouldn't we prepare and give them the best now? It's not just enough to have it on superficial level, but on a psychological, psychological level and a tangible level. We need to send messages and say, we appreciate you, we're investing in you, you're the best that we have. And they don't need to go to other schools to see the best. They should be able to get the best right here, so in their minds, they can internalize and then begin to formulate within themselves that they are the best. We, we read the bridge and we oftentimes say Trenton makes the world takes. We need to get back to doing that by investing in our babies, investing in that turf field. And making sure when they come out and play and practice, they can have the best of everything and give the best to themselves. But I'll say it again, as long as the sentiments are that our schools are not our number one institution. No one living outside of Trenton will move here and the people who are living here will exit here. The schools have to be our number one priority because they are the institution that shapes and molds the minds of the dreamers who will build a new city for tomorrow. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Green.
Hello, Council Vice President, next we have a gentleman calling from six oh nine eight eight oh five three two two. Sir, can you please identify yourself?
Hello?
Yes, sir, what's your name, sir, for the record?
Yes, yes.
Your name, sir?
Yes, for the record, uh my name is Crown Prince Emperor L Bay Big Big Bag Bay. Heirs of Lincoln Holmes, heirs of Marvin Holmes, first African-American police officer, as they say, of the city of Trenton. Heir of Millham Township sixteen oh two to eighteen eighty-two. Also heir to the Continental Line. Uh for those people that don't know, Lincoln Holmes was Abraham Lincoln Holmes. Marvin Holmes was the first officer uh of color of city of Trenton. He goes back to Cherico, which is Richmond, Virginia, and this takes it back to the Continental Line. Uh I just wanted to talk a little bit about uh the reenactment. Uh which is going to occur there on Hart Avenue, as you know, Hart Avenue was the first nation's capital. And uh I just wanted, yes, yes, Vice President.
You ha- yeah, you, this, this, you have, you can speak on the agenda items only at this meeting.
Yes, yes.
If there's something else, you can speak on Thursday.
Oh, okay, I just wanted to reserve the application of anything because that has a preliminary application of questionnaire for New Jersey National Registry of Historical Places for Hart Avenue. It's already filed and I would like to have a sit down with the original family members that own the uh cemetery of back there, thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Next, Council President, we have J.C. Edwards.
Yes, Mr. Edwards. Mr. Edwards?
Yes, sir. Oh, Ms. Ed, Ms. Edwards, please go ahead, please. Please state your name for the record.
Hello?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, ma'am.
Hi, this is Josie Edwards, Trenton resident. Uh I wanted to co- hi, I just wanted to comment about uh Indigenous People Day in support of the resolution.
Okay.
So um I just. Support the resolution and on the grounds that only the people and not remove the holiday as a whole. So um you know, to maintain the benefits and people being able to have off, I think that is fair to Indigenous people that have also suffered. And we don't really have a date for break and celebrate our culture. So I just wanted to go on record for the resolution.
Thank you, Dan.
Hello?
Thank you.
Yes, uh next we have Council Vice President, we have a gentleman calling from five oh three zero two eight three. Can you state your name for the record, please?
Hello, yes, my name is Tyrell Smith.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, uh my name is Tyrell Smith, I'm a former resident of the South Ward, um for the South Ward and I'm also a property owner in the South Ward. And I um currently work in um in Trenton for the Smith Family Foundation. Um I was calling, I've been trying to get some information on um the back roads on the prop, for the properties that I own back there.
Excuse me, sir, you, it's miss, you, you can't, this, you can only speak on docket items only at this meeting. If you have other questions, then you either need to call the city or, or talk on Thursday.
Okay, thank you, I'll call back Thursday, thank you.
Okay, thank you. No problem.
Next, Council Vice President, we have Ms. Caitlin Fair.
Yes, go ahead, Caitlin. Caitlin? You may have to unmute yourself.
Council Vice President, would we like to move on to Mr. Stokes and come back to Ms. Fair?
Yes.
Mr. Terrence Stokes, you've been recognized, please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Terrence Stokes. Um just wanted to thank you for the opportunity to address council tonight. Um just wanted to speak in favor of the bond ordinance um for the. Projects for Trenton Public Schools, in particular for. for the projects for Trenton Public Schools, in particular for the turf field at the high school. This is something that has been discussed for the last ten to fifteen years. You know, as things change, as things evolve, as budgets get shorter and tighter, um, I think moving to this turf field, um, is definitely, can definitely be a cost-saving initiative, um, for the district. Um, you, you're talking about, you know, not having to line and cut fields on a daily basis, so the maintenance, um, is definitely lessened, um, from a safety perspective, you know, we see all of the, the majority of the, of the school districts in Mercy County are moving to turf fields. I think Trenton and Hamilton are two of the last, uh, remaining outliers who don't have turf fields. Um, you know, there's been discussions about, you know, the hundred and fifty million dollar state-of-the-art building and, you know, having a turf field to match. Yeah, that's great, but I think we need to look at the practicality of it, right? So, it's practical, it's economic sense, you know, to move to this turf field, um, you know, for, for, for our children, um, again, from a safety perspective as well as from an economic perspective. And, you know, as the leader of, uh, youth sports organization who utilizes, um, the grass fields at Capital City Sports Complex, you know, as we're having this discussion about, you know, turf at the high school, I, I hope that at some point, there's some, some discussions about putting turf field down at Capital City Complex, uh, the football field as well as the soccer field. So I'm just speaking in, in support of that ordinance and hope that council, um, supports it as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stokes.
Uh, before we proceed, I just want to note for the record, Council President McBride had to exit due to an illness. Um, hope she feels better. Uh, next we have, uh, Mr. Robin, or, uh, I'm sorry, Robin Patterson.
Yes, Mr. Patterson.
For Ms.
Hi, good evening, everyone, my name is Robin Patterson Phillips, and I'm, uh, resident of Trenton, New Jersey. I, uh, grew up out East Trenton, just wanted to comment on, um, the library in East Trenton. I just wanted to say that I think it's a great idea for them to reopen that library. I actually remember when it was open, um, as a kid, I actually used to go there, and it was, um, a beautiful library, and it gives, like, the kids a great sense of pride, and also, you can have, like, so many different programs running out of that library, like Girls Who Code or STEM programs, you know, for the kids. I just wanted to say, I think it's a great idea, and I also feel that, um, Trenton High, because it's such a beautiful school, they absolutely must have that turf for their football games, so, um, and anything else that's going on out East Trenton that's positive, um, I'm here for it, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, next we have, uh, Ms. Addie Lane, uh, Council, Council Vice President.
Yes, Fair.
Okay, uh, good evening, uh, this is Addie Lane, and I also am, uh, speaking on behalf of the support for the ordinance for the, um, Trenton School District, and certainly I echo the sentiments that you've heard, um, earlier. Our students deserve the best. If education is the answer, then we have to, in fact, invest in that answer. And by putting forth and approving this bond ordinance, we are investing in our children and we're investing in our future. So again, I just want to echo those sentiments that were expressed earlier, that we ask for your support, your, uh, support for this particular bond ordinance. It, it contains a, a number of projects that are going to improve our schools for our students, and that is what we need to happen. I think most of you, um, in, on council, or those of you in this meeting have in some way, shape or form, come in contact with the Trenton School System, and it's because of that school system that many of us were able to achieve and do some of the things that we've been able to do, and so certainly we have to put our money where our mouth is and make that investment in our future. So again, I just want to say thank you for your support, or your anticipated support of this bond ordinance, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lane.
Council Vice President, Ms. Fair has returned.
Oh, Caitlin.
Yes, thank you, Council Vice President, my apologies, can everyone hear me now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great, um, I won't be long, I just wanted to echo the sentiment about, um, the, the turf field, I think, uh, Freedom gave a really great, uh, several really great points about that, um, I don't know, uh, that many people know, but I spent a great deal of my adolescence growing up in the Wolver Section, and I have a lot of adult friends now who have, um, high school-aged children, who many of them have played sports for Trenton High, um, and have had great success in that arena. And quite frankly, football and many of the other sports at Trenton High have been their saving grace, and have been the reason why they haven't gotten involved in the streets, um, haven't been injured by gunfire or killed, um, haven't gotten involved in, um, and so I think by demonstrating an investment in this, uh, particular endeavor, we're demonstrating to them that we're investing in them and their future and the things that they are passionate about, um, that for many of our young people in the city is one of the only things that they have, um, that's keeping them away from other, some of the other negative influences, um, that are surrounding them. So, I hope that we'll take that into account, um, in addition to the practicality of that, uh, Mr. Sw- Mr. Stokes spoke about, um, when we're considering how to move forward with that particular ordinance, and, and would hope that they will move forward with that. I also just wanted to speak, um, I'm very excited about the, the, um, Locust Hill project, and I'm exceptionally grateful to Algernon for all of the work that he's done around that. The East Trenton community is extremely excited about that, and, um, truly believe that they will be such a wonderful steward of that particular project, um, and, you know, I'm grateful to council that you all seem to be in favor of that, um, just wanted to, um, put that on the record, that, um, I'm extremely excited about that, supported that as well.
Hey, thank you.
Next, Council Vice President, we have Ms. Sherri Garrett.
Yes, mister.
Ms. Garrett.
Ms. Garrett.
Thank you, Vice, um, Vice, um, Council, um, Mars Caldwell Wilson, for allowing me to speak. I just wanted to go down, um, a list of stuff that was covered, um, on tonight's agenda. Um, last, um, meeting, um, for, um, twenty-one-two, um, President, um, McBride and, um, I think the superintendent and a few other people were going to close out the outstanding bonds, um, to determine if there was monies that were also, that's already, that's, um, sitting, um, available, um, under the Trent Board of Education, would be, help out with these expenses, was that done?
Yes.
Okay, and did there, was there any money balances that could go towards this? Is that what, reason that there was a change in cost?
Yeah, that, may I say something about that?
Um, not right now, miss, I, I was just going to say something.
There is a resolution already that we have to, eh, introduce tonight.
Yes. The resolution, the amount was changed to show the difference of the bonds that were canceled out.
Okay. Okay, but that resolution wasn't presented, I think what Councilman Rodriguez is saying.
Yes, it's tonight, yeah, it'll be voted on, on Thursday.
Voted on on Thursdays, a roll call, ma'am.
Okay, um, okay, okay. Um, resolution, um, twenty, twenty-one oh twenty, um, in regards to the, um, uh, uh, Trenton City Council certifying compliance with, uh, in regards to the Employment Commission for consideration of arrests and conviction, uh, under Title Seven of Civil Ri- Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four. I'm, I'm, I, that, I think is the federal act and, um, New Jersey Act, I, if I recall, Governor Christie, uh, made some adjustments to that, uh, act on the New Jersey level, on the state level, where, uh, that, uh, could not be a reason to not fire a person because they had a prior conviction, and I'm not sure if that conviction had to be a certain, so, so far, um, like, ten years back or so, but I think that was adjusted, so please take consideration to that, the change in law with that. Um, in regards to tw- uh, twenty-one tw- um, twenty-one oh twenty-one, um, under the Business Administrator, your, eh, can questions be, oh, can questions, uh, I want to attend, um, tomorrow's, um, budget meeting, is that still on for tomorrow at five-thirty?
Yes.
And can I ask questions in regards to the budget?
Ms. Garrett, I can't keep answering your questions, but there is a public comment section.
Okay, all right, I, I'm sorry, Council, uh, Vice, uh, Pre- uh, Councilwoman, I'll just keep going. So, I want to be able to ask questions, I plan to participate, okay? Um, twenty-one oh twenty-two, uh, the resolution condemning hate and extreme extremists, I agree with Councilwoman Vaughn, that, 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 uh, resolution should be tabled because that sounds like a lot of trouble. Uh, it reads one way, but it could be implemented in another manner, and, um, if you're going to include stuff, you're going to have to include a lot more than just something on a federal level that, not to say it doesn't affect me, but to me, you know, that doesn't, it's not going to play out well in Trenton. Uh, in regards to twenty-one oh twenty-four, um, I think you cloud, the cloud system, I think I've mentioned this before because, uh, the administration has purchased, uh, services from IT companies for whatever purpose, from taxes, I mean, processing, um, assess the, assessing taxes, processing taxes, bills, whatever, it has to be a main system, it could be a cloud system, that, or, uh, you're going to have to take it up another notch, uh, there's, uh, uh, many, uh, uh, software companies taking, uh, align all the departments depending on what your usage would be, that should not keep costing, you're paying for bits and pieces for IT services. I mean, this is becoming very costly. And, um, it's just, it's just, it's, I don't think it's, it's, we're not looking forward, we're not fast-forwarding. We approve 5G and we're not even using the technology, what the heck we're booting 5G for? We still at, using antiquated system and processes, you know, but we just approved to get I, 5G towers put in, surrounded in the city, we're not really using the, using the technology. Uh, twenty-one oh twenty-five, um, in regards to twenty-one, twenty-one oh twenty-five to twenty-one oh twenty-eight, um, in, in regards, regards to the demolition, again, I don't understand why we're hiring various contractors. One contractor would be able to demo these properties and it would be less expensive because you're giving him a number of properties that he can merge in and give you a wholesale price. I don't understand why we're paying, um, these ridiculous fees for demoing a building because it really doesn't cost us much. Um, twenty-one oh twenty-nine, twenty-one thirty, um, I have to say, if we're hiring a company for environmental review or, um, testing, D- New Jersey DEP does that, they have a unit that does that, I don't understand why we're paying private companies these high ridiculous, high hooting prices, again, we're not using cert resources that we have within government to lower our costs. Again, this is poor planning, um, poor, uh, everything, it just, I, I just don't understand, we just keep boosting these, paying out these monies, and it just, it's just, it's just too costly, and we're not thinking about the taxpayers. We can't ra- raise taxes, but you're still spending money like it's, like, it's just flowing, and, but we're paying for this. Uh, twenty-one oh thirty-one, um, Resilient Board of Contract for Failing Process, again, what am I saying here? Um, again, uh, Councilwoman Vaughn has a point, um, you can hire someone at a temporary position up to two years, and if you decide, if the role, if the cha- if the demand, uh, for the position, uh, it, you know, goes on, uh, for beyond the two years, then it's a possibility you can, uh, create that position, um, and fill it with the person who's been working it two years, they, they just, it's just a contract that you're not paying, um, health insurance or, um, health insurance and, um, or any, like, uh, 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 401K or anything like that. So I don't really understand these excuses that the, uh, uh, the administration keeps giving in regards to bringing in someone within the city, because there are a lot of qualified people in the city with some very strong skills, and I can say I'm one of them, I'm not looking to work for the city, you know, under this administration, not, no way and no how, but there are qualified people in the city that can fill these roles for two years, and after two years, you have a choice, either hire them or let them go, depending on what your demand is. Twenty-one oh thirty-three.
Ms. Garrett, hold on a second, Mr. Conlon, someone is speaking in the background.
Ma'am, I'll, I'll mute them when I find them. Ms. Garrett, please continue, you have one minute left.
Uh, really? Y'all got a whole agenda, you only giving me ten minutes? Twenty-one oh thirty-three is a great idea, I support the project. Twenty-one oh thirty-four, legislature approving, authorizing, uh, uh, vessel technologies, I did see that, uh, but again, this Vaughn was, this Councilwoman Vaughn was right, this is for redevelopment, economical reasons, so I, I would have liked to have been part of that meeting, but I didn't know about it. Uh, twenty-one oh thirty-five, legislature appoint Beverly City Committee, that thing needs to be tabled, and I'm glad it was pulled because all those people, those organizations do not live in the city, and I don't understand why we're giving it input. Uh, in regards to, uh, Department of Waterworks, again, uh, a lot of this stuff has to be pulled, I'm glad Councilwoman, Councilman Vaughn had her records, and she was keeping, keep, keeping score, uh, in regards to spending, in regards to Trenton Waterworks, because I, as I repeatedly have said, that we are spending too much money, and this is, and, and, and what I really, uh, uh, annoyed to hear is that after, I, I want to wrap it up, I'm going to wrap it up, what I'm really annoyed to hear is that after these resolutions are passed, that their, the language in these resolutions are being changed. That's illegal, that's totally illegal, and we are paying, uh, these administrators, uh, under this administration, too much money, and, uh, and, and they're asking for more money, for incompetent, that's it, thank you for allowing me.
Thank you.
Yes, uh, next Council Vice President, we have Ms. Sherrell Snyder.
Um, good evening, good evening, thank you, Council, thank you, um, Council Vice President, thank you, Mr. Conlon, for saying my name correctly. Um, firstly, I'd like to say, Freedom, you spoke so well, um, we need to take care of our children, um, they are our future and they will take care of us. Thank you, Freedom. And Algernon, thank you, Council, for your consent.
And Sherrell, you have to stand at the docket.
Um, I am on the, on the council, I am, um, Vice, um, Council, um, Vice President, um, Algernon, he spoke on twenty-one oh thirty-three.
Okay.
Okay, for the six regiment colored troops, and them coming over to Hart Avenue, and being in the building and giving history to that area, um, black history. And because we have a cemetery right next door with, um, black people buried there, I think this will bring a lot of, um, information to the residents, and I am so happy that Council gave consent to this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, uh, my speaker on twenty-one oh three.
Vice President, we have Ms., uh, Kim Booker.
Go ahead.
Good evening, Council and, uh, Vice President, uh, Councilwoman Caldwell Wilson, I think it's an opportunity to speak, I want to stand in, uh, support of twenty-one oh thirty-three, uh, with the Interpretive Center, the museum, uh, for the Locust Hill Cemetery, I am, uh, in full support of this. I truly believe this is a good opportunity to not, um, as Sherrell stated, uh, be, uh, a point of education for our residents, but also mainly our children, we need to show, um, what, uh, others have fought, bled and died for, for them to have the opportunities that they have today, and that these lives that, um, are now there, interred there, uh, their lives mattered, and we want to celebrate them, we want to, you know, definitely, uh, tell not only our residents and our children how important, um, it is for them, we want hopefully tourists to come and see our city, there's so much history in our city, and I totally stand in support of that. Also, I would like to, uh, let you know, I support the turf at Trenton High, um, I also agree that- I also agree that they need to, our athletes need to see state-of-the-art fields here, not just where they go to compete. So, I also want to say that I support that ordinance as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. I want to speak, Vice President.
Yes.
Okay, all is well. I just wanted to speak on twenty-one oh three or twenty-one.
Please state your name for the record, sir.
For the record, my name is Crown Prince. All is well, thank you. I would like to just, for the record, state twenty-one oh three or thirty-three that we're speaking about. That is filed with the National Registry of Historical Places. I have an application number. I was given tours for that place and spent about $150,000 back there. I was thrown in jail for seven months for being back there with the original paperwork, was not charged for crime. And I still have the original paperwork for that. I had the keys to the gate. I was operating. I cleaned out back there, had boats back there. I was giving tours back there through the whole community. I have all the listing of my family that's buried back there with the original paperwork. It's filed with the state. I had the keys and I was locked up for seven months and they took $120,000 to $150,000 worth of stuff from me. And I was thrown in jail. This is the Crown Prince. I had the horses back there. I was giving tours. I have the original paperwork for the Continental Line. I have the original paperwork for the city of Trenton. My family was the first police officers. They found the Trenton State College and Princeton University. I have all the paperwork for the record. They've been keeping me a secret for 14 years in the city of Trenton. I have the original paperwork for the city of Trenton. And this is a recorded line and this is for the record. I have all the original paperwork. I want to see some disorder on that back there. I would like to sit down with Brother Ward. I have the original paperwork for that and I will present it to you and it's going to blow your mind too as well. Welcome aboard. I would love to meet you. And all is well and thank you. And this is not, and all is well and this is not a game. I still have my horses and I'm still operating, but I have to be very quiet. You have a lovely city, a lovely town. My family incorporated Millham Township. I incorporated it. It was incorporated from 1882 to 1888. I have the original paperwork for it. I reincorporated it. I am the mayor of Millham Township. And I would like to meet with you, Brother Algernay Ward. I would like to meet with you. Have the original paperwork and I love the city of Trenton. Thank you, the Crown Prince.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Would anybody else like to be recognized by the Trenton City Council? This is for docket items only.
Hello?
Yes, ma'am. Please state your name for the record. Ma'am, did you want to be, did you want to speak public portion for the docket items only? Anyone else wish to be heard for public portion? I don't see anyone.
If not, Mr. Conlon, you can let Mr. Ward speak again.
Mr. Ward, please, please, you have the floor, sir.
Hello?
Algernon?
Okay, please mute your phone with the music. Thank you.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, there, there seemed to be some interest in the history of the Locust Hill Cemetery itself. I originally started out talking about the graveyards that we had here in the city of Trenton. The Trenton Historical Society compiled a list of 21 former burial grounds here in the city of Trenton and three of them still currently operate. Many of those early burial grounds were African-American burial grounds because they were not allowed to be buried in the white cemeteries at the time. I think many of you would be surprised to know that there was a Gordon Street Cemetery. It was right across the street from the Galilee Baptist Church. And there's another one that has come to mind called Gallows Hill, which is near Beet Street. And of course, it was called Gallows Hill for a reason. This is where condemned prisoners were taken and executed and buried in the potter's field nearby. It's a source of a lot of ghost stories around Beet Street. But when it comes to the Locust Hill Cemetery, its origins start as early as 1799. You may be familiar with the Friends Meeting House on the corner of Hanover and Montgomery Street. The Friends Meeting House that there on the corner of Hanover, right next to the YWCA. Next to that Friends Meeting House was a burial ground and the Quakers were the first to allow the burial of African-Americans in their own cemetery adjacent to the Friends Meeting House. In fact, the YWCA stands on the black burial ground. In fact, when it was built, they still found remains there that had been removed to Locust Hill. Its origin was the Mount Zion Church. Was the first AME church in the city of Trenton. And it was the burial ground next to the Friends. It was called the Hanover Burial Ground. And that's where many African-Americans, free African-Americans, I might point out, were buried in the area where the YWCA is now standing. A Mr. Wright, who lived on Hanover Street, petitioned a common council, we now call City Council, to remove, to stop any more internments in the African cemetery because it had become, quote, "a nuisance." Actually, that was very highly sought-after land by that time because it was downtown Trenton and a black burial ground wasn't fitting into the overall scheme. So, this common council pastor ordinance said that you couldn't bury anybody else there unless you got fined $10 for each incident. But that presented the Mount Zion Church with a dilemma. Where are we going to put the people who die now? And so, they also petitioned the common council to set aside some land for black burials. First, they asked to put it in the public burial ground, which is a very interesting story. We'll go down the line and talk about how Trenton was one of the earliest places where blacks and whites were buried together. But they set aside some land on what's now Hart Avenue. At that time, it was called Center Street. The Mount Zion Church could not sell the land where the burial ground was. So, they had to actually go to the state legislature and they had to pass a law which allowed them to sell the land without a deed. And they were allowed to sell that burial ground for $1,400. And they used that against the price, the $1,700 price of this land on Locust Hill. Locust Hill was actually a park. It was down by the, by the Assam Pink Creek. And this became the Locust Hill Cemetery. There was still a balance outstanding on the Locust Hill Cemetery property. So, the ladies of the church, the black women stepped in. They knew how to get things done. They had spelling bees, they had festivals, they had cooking, bake sales. And they raised a handsome sum of $70 to go against the outstanding balance for the property. And so, at the end of the day, the Mount Zion Church was left with a debt of only $250 for the burying ground. They started what's called the Locust Hill Cemetery Association and transferred deed title to the Locust Hill Cemetery Association. And they operated the Locust Hill Cemetery from 1873 all the way up into the late 1800s.
Nineteen oh five. Correction, nineteen oh five. Go ahead.
Thank you. And they operated up until that time and many of the prominent African-Americans in the city of Trenton were, they dressed there because it was such a beautiful place. And we can document about 100 or more internments there, including 10 United States colored troops who were veterans of the Civil War, were buried there. It, as the people who were incorporators of the Locust Hill Cemetery began to die off. No one took control of the management of the place. And it began to go down and it stopped being used as much. And again, there's a question as to why that was. It's because the city of Trenton decided to allow blacks and whites to be buried in the same cemetery. And this is a very interesting story. We can talk more about it at a later time. But we were, Trenton was very early in that. And so, you'll find African-Americans buried in the Riverview Cemetery in South Trenton at a very early stage in Trenton's history, often before many other towns allowed that kind of thing. And so, since we were no longer segregated to only Locust Hill, it stopped being used as much for a burial ground. And the wooden fence around it began to deteriorate. And it became a kind of a backwater. Once the fence was down, the city of Trenton itself began to use it as a dumping ground for ashes. You know, when people burned coal, they would dump the ash. And then finally, the back part of it was sold to a freight company out of Philadelphia who set up a garage there and began to use it. American Built Right actually owned it for a while. But they operated a garage for freight cars in that area.
Algernon, Algernon, I hate to interrupt you, but we have employees that have to get up very early in the morning so you can kind of wind it down. Thank you.
Yep. Near the end.
May I touch base on that real fast too with that? They also had, they also had the first northeast corridor too. They actually owned their own.
Excuse me, sir. Go ahead, Algernon.
Yes. It began to go in disrepair. You'll find several newspaper articles about it over the years describing in the various states of disrepair. The headstones were knocked down and for whatever reason, they may be buried. They may have been carried away and the fence disappeared. And as time passed on, most people in the neighborhood was outside of living memory of when it was being used and we just saw it as an open field. And the garage actually did some dumping in that area and the soil became polluted. But from time to time, all the way up until recent times, sometimes the, there would be a heavy rain and some of the graves would collapse and some bones would appear at the surface. And again, people who lived there even today, Ms. Wilkins related the fact that they would find from time to time bones on the surface and there being some consternation about it. But the lure of the community is what kept the memory of the Locust Hill Cemetery alive even to this day. Compliments to the city of Trenton, who actually didn't know the graveyard was still there. In fact, we began to ask the questions. They insisted it wasn't because they had a bill of sale to American Built Right. But when they look further back, they did more studies. I want to talk about the Hunter Report done by Damon de Varyatus, the Mazer Report. There's Trenton Historical Society. And I'm going to wind up right now. And say that the Locust Hill Cemetery is part of an overall plan for historic tourism with the Carver Y and the Higbee School and the local Hill Cemetery. We hope to make those spokes on a hub of people who come to visit our city and learn about African-American history. And thank you for indulging me, for giving me your thumbnail sketch of the Locust Hill Cemetery.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Algernon. Mr. Conlon? Mr. Conlon?
Yes, ma'am. I have a motion to close public portion.
So moved.
I have motion for Council Vice President, Mr. Blakely. Would you like to make the second, sir?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Need one more.
Aye.
Thank you, sir. All in favor and any opposed? So ordered. Public portion is closed and now move to civic comments.
If counted on that, I want to say what I need to say.
Go ahead.
So, I just think it's very important. We've been seeing a lot in the press about the city of Trenton and I want to say something about corruption. And I just want to read something very quickly from the World Bank. The World Bank considers corruption a major challenge in ending extreme poverty. Corruption has a disproportionate impact on the poor and the most vulnerable, increasing costs and reducing access to services, including health, education, and justice. Corruption in the procurement of drugs and medical equipment drives up costs and can lead to substandard or harmful products. The human cost of counterfeit drugs and vaccination on health outcomes and the long-life impact for children far exceed the financial costs. Unofficial payments for services can have a particular pernicious effect on the poor, on poor people in cities and across all communities globally. Empirical studies have shown that the poor pay the highest percentage of their income. That's related to corruption, bribes, and et cetera. Some studies have suggested that the poor may even be preyed upon since they are seen as powerless and cannot complain. Every stolen or misdirected dollar robs the poor of an equal opportunity in life and prevents governments from investing in their human capital. Corruption erodes trust in government and it undermines the social contract. This is a cause for concern across the globe. Of course, we see a lot of this in the city of Trenton. Corruption fuels and perpetuates the inequalities, inequities, and discontent that lead to violence, extremism, and conflict like we've seen in Washington, like we see in our own neighborhoods. That's all corruption, the gun violence in the city. Corruption impedes investment with consequent effects on growth and jobs. We need to rid corruption out of our government. Confronting corruption, we should use our human capital and financial resources more efficiently, attract more investments and grow our city and that will grow our city more rapidly. The World Bank recognizes that corruption comes in different forms. It might impact service delivery, such as when an official asks for bribes to perform routine services. Corruption might unfairly undermine the winners of government contracts with awards favoring friends, relatives, or business associates of government officials. So, I will just repeat that. Government might unfairly determine the winners of government contracts that awards favoring friends, relatives, or business associates of government officials. Or it might come in the form of state capture, distorting how institutions work and who controls them. A form, as we saw here tonight, when we talk about who appoints committees and boards, who controls who gets to sit on the board? Who makes that decision? So, a form of corruption that is often the most costliest in terms of overall economic impact. Each type of corruption is important and tackling all of them is critical to achieving progress and sustainable change. So, I would just say to everybody on this call tonight, and I will continue to advocate to rid corruption in the city of Trenton. Our city will never be able to progress forward and we will never be able to become fiscally independent and we never be able to govern under home rule like many, many other municipalities throughout our state if we don't rid ourselves of corruption and take it seriously. It is eating away at Trenton. Thank you, Council Vice President.
Thank you. Mr. Michelle?
Nothing at this time.
Mr. Rodriguez?
No grommets.
Mr. Harrison?
No grommets.
Mr. Blakely?
I just have a few comments. I'll be as brief as I can. Number one, that this evening, we are, not this evening, on Thursday, we'll be voting for very important matters for the city. I'm very honored to be able to support the bond ordinance. I have a former teacher in the Trenton Public Schools as well as a graduate, a class of 2005 graduate of Trenton Central High School. I'm very pleased to have the ability to vote on this. Our students deserve facilities that are worthy of their presence. I was one of the last folks who attended the former Trenton Central High School and it was just outrageous to conceive of students attending like that. And I'm so happy that that is no longer the case. I think that this bond would provide enhancements across the entire district. And for that reason, I am supportive of it. I'm supportive of the East Trenton Branch Library. I'm excited about seeing that going through. I'm also excited about seeing the African-American cemetery project at Locust Hill being moved forward. I think that's a really good thing. And I'm very pleased to see water bonds be considered so that we can provide upgrades for our infrastructure so that our residents and the people who use the water have access to clean and safe drinking water. I think, you know, one thing that I will say is that we are receiving a lot more views on council meetings because of COVID. You know, we're not having in-person meetings and so we're seeing an upset of community involvement and more eyes on a city council. I think that's a very good thing. You know, sunlight is the best disinfectant. And I think that the people of Trenton are seeing their government in action. And they are going to have a decision to make two years from now to either continue in this direction or move in a different direction. And so I really am very pleased that we're seeing so many people, you know, participating on these calls through our live feed, calling in and on Peterson's Breaking News and other outlets. I think it's a really good thing and I hope that it results in a resurgence in civic participation. These meetings are really important, but it's even more important to get people registered to vote and folks who are registered to vote to actually vote. The last time we had our election, you know, we had dismal civic participation. And I'm hopeful, and I'm hopeful, that with, you know, more civic participation, that folks will both run for office as well as support candidates for office. And that's all I have to say. Thank you so much. Godspeed and good luck and be safe.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. I just want to thank everybody for your patience and your tolerance tonight. It was a very long meeting, but we do appreciate your input. I want to thank the director and council for your participation. And I want to thank Algenon because Algenon has been really, with his group, have been spearheading this issue regarding the museum and Locust Hill for many years. So it is appreciated, Algenon, because it would break my heart when I would go out there and see the condition of that cemetery and with no recognition, just like an empty lot. So we do appreciate it and I'm glad to see that that is moving forward and I wish you well with it. Anything I can do to help, you know, you can just call me. So everybody have a wonderful evening and thank you again. And I'll look for a motion to close the meeting.
Before we do that, madam, Mr. Rodriguez did want to make a statement about the bond ordinance. I didn't know if he wanted to do that tonight or if he wanted to.
Oh, he said he didn't want, oh, I thought you didn't want to make comments. Go ahead, Mr. Rodriguez.
No, but you said that he was going to be voted on Thursday because I got, I got a made with a, there was no number on that resolution. And that resolution goes together with the bond ordinance, the school board ordinance.
Yeah, so that got done on Thursday. It's considered a walk-on at this point, so it'll actually be walked on.
Okay, that's all I was concerned because it had to be voted on Thursday.
Yeah, yeah, they have to walk it on with the new numbers.
Yeah, I have it as a walk. I received it late this afternoon. I have to get the signed copy as the form and legality and with factual content. So once I have that, I can walk it on on Thursday, no problem. And I'll look for that tomorrow.
Motion to adjourn?
I have a motion to adjourn from Council Vice President, Colleen Wilson. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Harrison. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So ordered. We are adjourned at 10:23 PM. Everybody have a nice evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Ward?